Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 14th, 2023 Regular Meeting of the Newtown Township Board of Supervisors. It's our usual custom, we hold a moment of silence. I would just like to mention that I work at a food bank. And recently, the food bank has given out more and more, it's had more and more clientele come. And it just, as I was driving home from the food bank this afternoon, I thought, I don't have to worry about my meals. And we're doing some work with restaurants tonight. I don't have to worry about food to eat, and that's a real blessing. And I just, just thought it was appropriate for a moment of silence to just give that some thought, especially again, as we, as we actually do some business around restaurants this evening. So if you'll join me in a, join the board in a moment of silence. Thank you very much. And then now please join the board in a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mr. Manager, are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
No special actions? That brings us to our first round of public comment. I would ask anyone who has a comment on anything not on the agenda this evening, come to the podium and state your name and where you live. And I see no one coming. All right. We'll move right along. That brings us to, as soon as I get my page turned, reports of boards and committees. I see Peggy Driscoll in the house, so welcome.
Good evening. Peggy Driscoll, Chair of the Newtown Planning Commission, here to give you a report on our meeting of June 6th. We had two zoning hearing applications, first one being Brandmore, The Greystone, at 552 Washington Crossing Road. The applicant is seeking relief for additions to the building and some setback and impervious relief to reconfigure the parking lot around the building. The commission recommends that the board send this application to the zoning hearing board without comment. Next, we had the Princeton Brain and Spine at 104 Pheasant Run. The applicant is seeking relief to place a sign above the nine-foot height at the same height as the other businesses in this building. The commission recommends that the board send this application to the zoning hearing board without comment. Next, we had Land Development, Walsh, at 385 Stupphil Road, was a minor subdivision. This is a lot line change, the subdivided six-acre parcel into three, two three-acre parcels. We recommend that the board approve this application, subject to compliance with the review letter of CKS dated May 30th, 2023. Next, we had the Blue Point Grill at 3 West Road for a revised conditional use. This is a revision of the existing conditional use to accommodate a new patio with an addition of 64 seats. We recommend that the board approve this change, subject, subject to compliance with the conditions of the prior conditional use and the review letter of CKS dated May 25th, 2023. And our last item was for Capital Grill at 2807 South Eagle Road. The applicant is seeking conditional use approval for uses E5 and E6 eating place in the space formerly occupied by Pier 1 Imports in the Village at Newtown Shopping Center. The restaurant will have seating for 210 indoor and 26 outdoor seats. The applicant's attorney has agreed to speak with Bricks Moore about requiring employees to park in the spaces behind the buildings throughout the shopping center. We recommend that the board approve this application, subject to compliance with the CKS review letter dated May 25th, 2023. And that was all we had. Any questions? I'll try to answer them.
Any questions for the board?
I have a question.
Okay, Mr. Mack?
Yeah, I know that this Capital Grill is about, what is it, 5,600 square feet? Do you recall what that was?
I think it was about that.
And by this crazy law that we, or change to the ordinance, where only 4.7 parking spaces per 1,000 square feet are needed, whereas previous to that agreement, this would have required, so that calculates out the 41 parking spaces for this over 200-seat restaurant. My question is, in these, you probably don't know the answer to this, we probably have to get somebody who's an attorney, like Joe over there, to give us an, give me an answer. There's outdoor seating for 26, which I would calculate to be 10% of the total seating capacity of that restaurant, and maybe an extra 10% of square feet. In all the Bricks Moore restaurants that we have, I don't think the square footage devoted to outdoor seating has been used in the calculation of the number of parking spots, or the, more importantly, when we come to that point where there's 45% of the available space is used for restaurants. I mean, I think that's what a lot of people are looking forward to, when they will stop adding restaurants to that shopping center. But my point is, have you ever considered, in the planning commission, asking about the, you know, the impact of the square footage of patios and outdoor seating as being part of that calculation? You think that's something that we should be asking about?
We, we have discussed over several meetings, maybe revisiting our parking calculations for the center. The, we know the parking is an issue there. The applicant actually did a parking study on June, let me pull it up here. They did a parking count on June 1st, 2nd, 3rd, which was a Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night. The total, the total amount of parking space throughout the whole center, in front of McCaffrey's, over where Ordana is, and where Pier 1 formerly was, that all three parking areas, there are 1,076 parking spaces. They did the count and indicated that there were 249 available spaces on-site during the highest peak period, which was a Saturday night at 6:30, equating to a parking occupancy of 77%. They said it was less during the other time periods over the three-day observation. You know, one thing I think we should keep in mind when we did planning and developing of the new addition with the new restaurants, we tried to make it walkable, installing the sidewalks and the crosswalks, hoping that people would park maybe wherever they could find a parking spot and walk to where they were going. People seem to like to park right at the front door and go in, but, I mean, it is a permitted use here. They are, I believe by ordinance, required to have valid parking. And we did speak to him about Bricks Moore. We've noticed that there are parking, several parking spaces behind the McCaffrey Shopping Center that maybe the employees aren't using. And the, Joe said he would speak to Bricks Moore about encouraging, talking to the tenants, and trying to get them to park a little further away.
Right, parking is the one issue, I'm assuming when the grill comes up here for their presentation, I can ask him more about the issue of the space being devoted to restaurants in that entire development. By my calculation, without considering the outdoor seating areas, if this restaurant comes in, I think it's 8,500 square feet, would bring that total up to 37.5%. Maybe Joe Blackburn can be more accurate on that. But I'm just curious as to if you added all the outdoor seating, does that 37.5 come up to something larger? And should that be used in the calculations for when we reach the limit?
I believe that the, the amount of seating in the restaurants is incorporated into the parking calculations, if I'm correct.
Well, I'm not just interested in the parking calculation, I'm interested in when do we stop bringing restaurants into that area, because it's not only parking, there's traffic problems and so forth, that I continually hear complaints from residents about, mostly about the traffic.
I do as well. I mean, we all live here, every, all of us, members of the planning commission, we're all residents here. Nobody's really happy about what's going on down there. We're, we're trying to work with it the best we can with what we have to work with, and I think sometimes too, people need to be a little more patient sometimes. Everybody's in a hurry to get to where they're going.
Yep. And there'll be, there'll be more chance to ask that question in a few minutes when we get to that item on the agenda. Any other comments or questions for Ms. Driscoll? Thank you very much.
Okay.
All right. That brings us to reports from board members. Mine is fairly short. First of all, happy Flag Day. I believe it is Flag Day today. Also, going back to Memorial Day, another patriotic, patriotic holiday, I wanted to thank Kyle's, Kyle's wife for giving me a ride that day in the parade. Couple of other meetings that I attended in the past two, three weeks. We had a fire service committee, and that's an advisory committee, but they are putting together something on what the future of fire services in Newtown Township needs to And so that will be, we'll be bringing that to the board at some point. Also, met with the auditors briefly for a question and answer session, and I attended a sewer authority, sewer authority meeting yesterday. Mr. Vice Chairman?
I have nothing to report.
Okay. Adam, Secretary-Treasurer.
I also attended the sewer authority meeting yesterday. I also attended the fire services meeting with Dennis. And we had the environmental advisory committee meeting on Monday night, which I also attended. And that's about it for the week. I think that's enough.
Mr. Calabro, anything?
I have nothing to report.
Okay. Mr. Davis?
Also nothing to report. Thank you.
Okay. We'll move right along. Public hearings. And Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first public hearing this evening of three that we have involves the application of Blue Point Grill for a conditional use, actually an amended, excuse me, conditional use, to operate a Use E5 eating place and Use E6 eating place drive-in at 3 West Road in Newtown, in the PC Planned Commercial District, specifically to expand outdoor seating from the previously approved 36 seats to 100 seats. Before we get started, and I know counsel is here representing the applicant, I would like to mark the following exhibits. Exhibit B for board, exhibit one, is the proof of publication of notice of this evening's hearing. That was published in the advance of Bucks County on May 28th and June 4th, 2023. Exhibit B2 is the photograph depicting the posting of the property with notice of tonight's hearing. Exhibit B3 is the application itself, and exhibit B4 is the CKS engineers' review letter dated May 25th, 2023. Those will be the board exhibits for this hearing. We have Mr. McGinnis here, representing the applicant. Mr. McGinnis?
Good evening. Mike McGinnis from Begley Carlin, here on behalf of the Blue Point Grill. Mr. Sanders, if I might suggest as well, perhaps marking as an exhibit, the conditional use decision that was previously rendered as part of the initial application, which hearing was held on August 10th, 2022.
Okay, that, for the record, that decision, bear with me, was dated September 14th, 2022.
All right, thank you.
We will mark that as exhibit B5.
As I stated at the outset, my name is Mike McGinnis, I'm with Begley Carlin, I'm here tonight on behalf of the Blue Point Grill. I have with me Bill Riordan from Bowler Engineering, and also Jack Morrison, who's here as the representative on behalf of Blue Point. As Mr. Sanders summarized, this is an amended conditional use application, specifically correlated to Blue Point Grill's outside seating, the property that's located in the Newtown Shopping Center, the site of the former Corner Bakery. I believe the Board of Supervisors are aware that we recently procured a small dimensional variance relating to impervious surface that would facilitate this small addition. The expansion particularly is 976 square feet. The application, which is pending before you, would allow for up to 64 additional seats. What I would request, if the board would indulge me, is I would like to provide a summary of the testimony that would be offered by Mr. Morrison, have Mr. Morrison sworn in and affirm that the testimony that he would give is accurate with respect to my summary, and then I know there are some items that he would like to address directly to the board at the conclusion of my summary. So we covered at the zoning hearing board and at the planning commission why this is happening, and I'd just like to provide a bit of additional background for the board. I think we discussed, actually when we were before you previously, that Blue Point has always envisioned or has aspirations to expand a bit with respect to the outside seating at this location. There have been a number of delays, unfortunately, none of which having to do with anything on the township's end, which have prevented Blue Point from opening on-site to date. We are now fortunately close to being open. We have a targeted opening date in August of this year, and the delay has presented an opportunity to hopefully do the remainder of the fit-out in tandem with the small expansion of the outdoor seating area. Jack, who's with me again, had previously addressed this, but I'm sure is willing to provide additional detail to the board about how the outdoor seating in general is sought as an option for when it's, of course, seasonal and nice out as an amenity to some of the customers who would be visiting the restaurant. This is not an attempt to simply expand the maximum seating capacity at the restaurant. We've hit on some of these details before, but again, to briefly reiterate and refresh the board's recollection, there are 52 spaces at this location between the Blue Point Grill Restaurant and the TD Bank. The peak hours between the bank and Blue Point's operation are compatible, and I think this is an important component to highlight, but the parking lot, our parking lot in the Newtown Shopping Center in particular, and this section of the shopping center, has adequate capacity. So a couple items I want to bring up. We discussed at the Board of Supervisors' prior presentation that the employees on Blue Point's end are going to be directed to park across the street interior to the shopping center, but not within the 52 spaces. There was an analysis that was done, and I am also counsel for the shopping center itself, back when there was a proposal to build a new structure at the corner of the shopping center, the, what I had referred to a couple of times in the past as the Old Navy Plan. There was an analysis that was undertaken regarding the parking counts and the peak parking in this shopping center particularly. And what that analysis depicted was that there were 539 spaces at peak in December, and 387 spaces at peak demand in August. We have, and to provide a little bit additional context, there are 937 spaces built out in the shopping center. There are additional spaces held in reserve, which I will get into in a second, why that's relevant, but I'm highlighting the August-December split, because again, even though the board was generous with the conditional use decision not restricting the seasonal component, obviously, an outdoor seating operation here is going to be seasonal in nature. So in August, there is very little traditionally parking demand within this shopping center. With respect to the overall parking spaces held in reserve, Jack Low, who was Adam Low's predecessor, who's the principal behind Newtown Bucks Associates, which is the ownership group in the shopping center, entered into an agreement in tandem with the shopping center's construction, whereby 174 parking spaces would be held in reserve. As part of that agreement, it is fully and totally within the township's discretion to force the construction of additional parking spaces if the demand ever warranted such construction. In particular, there are 33 additional spaces held in reserve at the bend, as you go into the shopping center and turn, as if you're going to the Blue Point Restaurant, there's 33 spaces. We don't believe those spaces are going to be necessary. We think there's, there's adequate parking between these 52 spaces and the 151 spaces directly across as you get closer to the Acme. But if it's desired by the township, and if, if I could suggest six months, nine months, 12 months after Blue Point is open, if the thought is, we would like to bring to bear more parking spaces in the shopping center, I can make the representation tonight as counsel for Mr. Low, that of course, he will buy by the agreement that was previously entered into with the township. So I think, again, I know the township is sensitive to parking demand in shopping centers, and I did want to go through some of the numbers at the outset as to why we are comfortable that we have adequate parking for this location and this expansion. The conditional use decision, which we received previously from the board, is being affirmed in its totality with respect to the outdoor seating modification, and again, I'll highlight it's up to 64 additional seats. We're not sure that there's going to be 64 additional seats, but it's up to 64 seats. Specifically, there are compliance that we are, of course, agreeing to with township review letters. There is no, and I'm highlighting some of the items that was in Mr. Sanders' prior approval, no drive-through service at this location, no more than 145 indoor seats. We're now obviously seeking modification of the outdoor seating component. The employee count is not shifting, so no more than three shifts and no more than 45 total employees throughout any given day. That was a condition previously, we're asking for that condition to remain. The hours of operation, which was previously granted, was 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., seven days a week. Again, I will note that Blue Point does not have a present intention for this to be a lunch operation, but we did appreciate the township's latitude in granting the expanded hours from what we were originally requesting. There are no hazardous materials which would be stored on-site. The deliveries have not changed. This is still a key drop system, where delivery drivers access the site between 3:00 a.m. and 9:00 a.m., and will have no interference with the shopping center or other operations. We are not going to have an outdoor sound system, speakers, or any noise generating components to the exterior. And again, the township, the board generously did not put a cap during our last presentation on the seasonality of the outdoor space. We are anticipating it, of course, only being when the weather is nice and particularly focused upon the summer, but we're asking again for that condition, as it was worded, to be the same. Otherwise, for the reasons that we covered previously, we still think we meet the conditional use requirements that are outlined in the township's ordinance. We believe that this use and the expanded seating is consistent with the intent and purpose of the underlying district, is an amenity, an improvement for the site and for the restaurant, is suitable for the subject property, is in conformance otherwise with the ordinance requirements, and is suitable in the township with respect to traffic and safety. So that would be the sum and summary of our presentation. We appreciate this, the township's indulgence to this point. This has been a, I think this is our ninth, I believe, ninth public presentation or meeting we've had, and the township couldn't be better to Blue Point thus far, so I know Jack will say the same thing, but we do appreciate that. And with that, I would like, if I could, to have Mr. Morrison and Mr. Riordan, if desired, sworn in to affirm or correct anything that I summarized, and then I think Mr. Morrison would like to briefly address the board.
Okay, why don't we have Mr. Morrison at least initially sworn in, please?
Do you swear or infer that the testimony about the evidence, the truth, the evidence of the case? I did.
All right, Mr. Morrison, can you state your name for the record, please?
Jack Morrison.
Okay. And you're the principal behind Blue Point Grill?
Correct.
All right. Mr. Morrison, you heard the summary of the testimony that I provided to the Board of Supervisors this evening, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. And if, in fact, you were called to testify, would you so adopt my summary as your own testimony tonight?
Absolutely. I've heard it nine times.
All right. Very good. With that, I know there's some things you'd like to state to the board, if you can provide any additional context about why this is happening and how it will function based upon your experience operating restaurants for a number of years.
Okay. The, as we all know, through COVID, outdoor dining became very popular. Actually, it was our only venue that we had for, in New Jersey, probably for 20 months. The idea that, and we operate restaurants, and we just were in Princeton, and the town was very busy with graduations over the Memorial Day weekend. And in the center of town, we have a restaurant, and it was about 1:15 in the afternoon, because I was over there with the guy who's creating our server stations for, for Blue Point Newtown. And there was an hour and a half wait to sit outside, and you could sit anywhere you wanted inside. People prefer to eat outside when the weather's pretty. So what I was trying to convey in the previous meetings is that if, please don't envision 245 people being in our restaurant. I don't think that we'll ever see that moment. And what we're really looking to do is, when we take reservations for outside, to have the opportunity to accommodate guests to come to outside. When we call off into restaurants, we decide first, where do we want to go, or where can we eat outside? It's, it's a new, new criteria of outdoor dining, and we would like to have that opportunity. So when we hear 100 seats, which again, we haven't done the floor plans at all, I don't, I'm not sure, we just threw that number in there because ideally, we would have that opportunity to seat 100 people outside? We don't know yet, because we're in the design phase with Bowlers, of where the egress points are, what the, the safety features, the drains, all the different things. We would like to have the opportunity to have up to 100 seats outside. And not, just one more thing, we, our company received an award last night as philanthropist for the year for Mercer Street Food Bank. We've been a supporter of Mercer Street Food Bank for 25 years, and we believe in that too, food insecurity, and that's what our company's about. I just had to add that, because I am coming to the community, and we do like to support things.
Thank you. And again, I do have Ms. Riordan with me as well, if there's anything from a technical standpoint, but otherwise, we'd be happy to field any questions the board would have at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Sanders, would it be appropriate to frame a motion and then have discussion?
Let's, before we frame a motion, let's sort of complete the hearing, and to complete the hearing, that would involve questions from the board and And to complete the hearing, that would involve questions from the board and also public comment before a motion is made, sort of a little flip-flop from what we usually do, but this is a public hearing.
Thank you. Thank you. I have one or two questions. First one is, there will be an expansion of that pad outside, right?
Correct.
So, I wanted to make sure that I was looking at the drawings correctly. The other one is, the parking, I mean, I would be interested in looking at those 33 parking spots. It's, I don't know how we'd frame that, but at a three-month or a six-month, have a look at it at that point and see how things are functioning?
I think it's totally within the township's complete discretion. So that's something we'd be willing to agree to, of course. I don't even know that we need to agree to it. The township can set whatever date they would like, and as I stated at the outset, if it's necessary, those spaces would be constructed.
Okay. Does anyone else have a preference on how, what the length of time would be? I'm thinking three months. Would that be, what would be customary if I had to look at my professionals? Is there a customary time, period of time?
I would think you would want to see how the restaurant operates.
When do you estimate on opening?
In August.
Okay. So then you're talking about three months. You're talking about September, October, November. I mean, I don't know if those are the best three months to pick.
Yeah.
I might want to get by Christmas. I don't know.
I, yeah, I don't, like the gentleman said, we have the capability of making that decision at any time. I don't even know if we have to put a time limit on when we want to discuss this. Is that correct?
You can contact Mr. Morrison and Adam Low or office at any point that the township would like.
I hate to put the gentleman under a three-month pressure, and there's really no pressure.
If it's a rainy three months, that's the other thing.
Mr. Morrison, can you just, yeah, could you just come up to the mic? I apologize, and I know you're...
No problem.
Maybe we could get a mic to you, reasonable accommodation?
I just got it last week. No, and that's the idea of seasonal seating. If it's a terrible rainy fall, we won't really get a litmus on it. So, but please, I do have the, as you can see, it's a substantial investment for us. And Adam has repeatedly said, whatever, whenever, whenever you want to pick up the phone and say, "Put it in there," we can do that. I agree that we feel like we're okay. We don't have any interest in opening for lunch, and we, too, want to make sure that we have a successful restaurant. That works within the community. So we're more than willing to listen and do whatever we all feel, and what you feel is important and get that. Thank you.
Can I make this?
Sure.
I would certainly like to be proactive and get those 31 spots in if we are able to do so. All there is is congestion over there, and I appreciate your, the thought that you've given to this. But again, I do see problems that are, you know, quite foreseeable, really. So if it's at all possible, I would certainly like to see those 31 spots added. They might not only benefit you, they might benefit other places, but we certainly need it, so if that means anything.
I would appreciate having the opportunity to open, though, rather than to wait for construction and weather and all that for the spaces. I can assure, I was just over there, if you drive by there tonight at 7:30, it's empty. It's really, it's quiet over there, so.
Right. But we're talking about the holiday season, and...
We're not going to have outside seating in the holiday. So, I mean, I understand it. I'd just like to get open, please, if you don't...
Well, I don't want to stop you from getting open, that's for sure.
And with outside, so, thank you.
I do have another question. Your pad, the outside pad, it looks fine. I don't see any problems with it. I want to make sure that you are landscaping it properly.
Well, that's, if you saw the drawings, as we've gone through the conversations, I realize that we don't necessarily want to look at TD Bank, nor do our guests want to look out at a parking lot on TD Bank and with a dumpster. So the more we've gotten used to this, the proportion of the patio that we're putting out there is really comfortable with the size of the building. It's not a big patio. We could have, you know, really pushed out or asked for that. And as we started to draw it, I have got, we've removed, we've sort of re-storefronted the whole place, so now we're going to have shrubbery across the front of the restaurant, and we're going to extend that shrubbery line across the front of the patio area. And across which, 532 is it that we have here? The road that's right out there? So we're going to be buffered in, and I, really, it's selfishly, it's for the guest experience, but also it's attractive for the neighborhood because you, you'll see some warnings, you know, umbrellas peek out, which will entice, but you won't see activity. We're not going to, it's not going to be...
Yeah, I'm not worried about that. I certainly hope that you have in mind to use native plants and trees when you...
Oh, sure. We have a horticulturist. I'm active.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, I know, the percentage devoted to restaurants does not apply to this shopping center, but can you tell me the square footage of this 100-seat patio versus the square footage of your indoor seating?
I believe the indoor seating's 5,000 square feet and the exterior's 976-square-foot expansion of a small current...
With some utility room. So I think we're about 1,250 square feet of outside seating.
Okay. And did you say 5,000 interior?
Interior, yeah.
Okay. I mean, again, I have no objection. I just wanted to make some comments on a few things you said about when people want to eat outside. I know that the previous restaurant where Ardany is, and maybe they're still, Ardana, they're still doing it, they had igloos in the summer, in the winter, where people could eat outdoors. I know that there's a steakhouse in the borough where they had outdoor seating, but then they added tents and the, in those flaming things inside the tents. And I know that at the Market Restaurant, they also have heated outdoor seating. I mean, if I, I wouldn't want to eat outdoors in December, but there are some people who like to do that.
That light switch turned off, frankly.
And, you know, I really, I don't mind, when you have people eating outdoors, I really don't care. I'm just trying to get an idea of these patio spaces and outdoor seating, how much space they're adding, and although it's not applicable in this case, to the Brixmore case, it may be more applicable, but we're trying to consider, you know, where's the cutoff for the restaurant's use in that, in that space. So I wish you luck, and I look forward to eating there.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Yes, sir.
Great.
Just in regards to the square footage, there's no alteration to the square footage inside, correct?
No.
It's been 5,000 square feet. It continues to be 5,000 square feet. On the patio, it looks like you intend to build deep and long addition, correct?
Yes, sort of. If we have this little tiny square now, it's sort of an L that we're going to add to it.
Okay. Now, just to piggyback on what Mr. Mack was saying about outdoor dining, you have no intention on closing out that patio and making it an enclosed dining area?
Not at all, not at this time.
Now, you're going from 36 seats to 100 seats on the outside, and you have 145. So that means your outside seating is 70% of the indoor seating.
Okay.
So if you were to have a 100% seating of 245, that would be quite a bit.
Our kitchen wouldn't handle that, frankly.
Well, don't say that.
No, 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 I mean that. You know, there's about a guest experience. So we generally, like I said, we, for the longest time, because now if there's a passing storm, we don't take any reservations outside. It's really a fickle little situation out there. Perfect weather, like we've had this spring, where we feel confident there's not a rainstorm in 10 days, we'll take a reservation outside.
Okay. So reservations will be made for it? It's not first come, first served?
Correct, generally. Unless it, like I said, unless there's going to be a storm running through, so it's first come.
Now, the, you mentioned the parking that's kept in green, and you mentioned something, not you, the attorney. I'd mentioned something about the so-called Old Navy site.
Right.
Isn't that on the other end here?
Yeah. I'm sorry if I confused that. It was just a statement to orient the board as to when that analysis was done. It was a few years ago when that was envisioned. Obviously, that's not occurring.
Gotcha. Now, was that, was that done prior to the expansion of Piccolo, which may also have dibs on that green parking, or?
The, the parking analysis in the shopping center would have been done prior to Piccolo's recent application, yes.
So does that affect your parking calculations if you had to use that green space now?
No, we're fully compliant. We have, we're well within the zoning restrictions in terms of our parking ratio in the center.
Okay. Now, hours of operations, is this correct, 4:00 a.m.?
No. It, that's a type of graphical issue in the township review letter. We are, again, as a summary, every single thing that is in the prior conditional use decision, we're requesting to be identical, which was particularly at Section 5, under the order, hours of operation will be 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. We're asking for that to remain the same, even though, again, there is no present intention for there to be lunch at the site.
Gotcha. When do, I mean, in all reality, when do you think that you'll start seating people? Because I'm just trying to, you're trying to coordinate with the...
4:00, we may extend hours on the weekends.
What time does TD Bank close?
Seating close?
TD Bank.
Oh, TD Bank. Well, I don't, is it open on the weekends?
Because it would affect your parking in that parking lot.
They close at 5:00, right? Bank hours. Yeah. So it's right about when we open, so it's...
So there'd be an hour of overlap, and then from that on, that parking lot should be pretty much empty?
Correct.
And all yours, so to speak.
Correct. And we're not that robustly busy at 5:00. People like to go out at, you know, 7:00.
And there's no such thing as banker's hours anymore.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We don't know when they work or when they go home. I guess that's all, that's all I have. No outside music, correct?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I had that 11:00 to 11:00 highlighted here, too. I wanted to see what the motion was, so.
Well, the motion will not specifically reference the hours of operation. It will merely mention that the applicant shall comply with all conditions of prior conditional use approval.
Okay. That's good. Can I ask another real quick question? You had said the parking analysis was done, and you gave the numbers 539 and 387. Were those the number of spots that were in use?
Yes. The peak in December was 539, and in August was 387 spaces occupied in the center.
Out of the 930.
Correct.
Okay. Got it. Okay. So we open it up to the public?
Public comment.
Public comment. Public comment on this restaurant. Seeing none?
John D. April. John D. April, Newtown Grant, biggest and the best. Can't believe you guys, but then again, what you are and everything. How you could push for, to get rid of trees and dig up grass and put some asphalt down is beyond me. I mean, it's bad enough, you know, you're anti-business and anti-restaurant, but, you know, you're asking for parking spots before you even open. Let them open, see if they need them. They probably won't. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Seeing none, Mr. Chairman. I believe it would be appropriate to entertain a motion. However, before we do, Mr. McGinnis, any final comments, any other testimony?
No, thank you. We're looking forward to opening, and we thank you for your consideration this evening.
Okay. Thank you. If the boards have a mind, it would be a motion to grant the application of BPG Inc. for a revised conditional use to permit an additional 64 outdoor seats for a total of 100 seats on an estimated 16 outdoor tables on the previously approved outdoor paver patio as proposed for expansion by the applicant this evening, subject to the applicant's compliance with the following conditions. One, the applicant shall comply with all conditions of the conditional use decision of the Board of Supervisors dated September 14th, 2022. Two, to the extent the CKS Engineers Review Letter of May 25th, 2023, prescribes additional requirements beyond those articulated in the September 14th, 2022, conditional use decision of the Board of Supervisors, those additional requirements shall also be complied with, except where the conditional use decision is more strict than the Engineers' Review Letter, in which case the board's conditional use decision will be controlling. Three, deliveries will be coordinated with the other retail establishments in the area, and a key drop delivery system will be implemented, with all deliveries to be between the hours of 3:00 a.m. and 9:00 a.m. Four, there will be a total number of seats inside and outside of 245, with 145 seats inside and 100 seats outside on the patio at a maximum. Five, all outstanding fees owed to the township as a result of conditional use review shall be paid in full to the township prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Six, the applicant shall landscape the outdoor seating area to the satisfaction of the township engineer using native species. And seven, there shall be no enclosure of the outdoor seating area. And that is the motion for the board's consideration.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion. Do we have a second? Motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none? We don't have to ask for a public comment?
No, that, no.
We've already done that. Okay. Seeing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor of approving the conditional use for Blue Point Grill? Say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries 4-1.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Davis.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Good luck. And heal quickly, Mr. Morrison.
Moving on rapidly.
Capital Grill. I'm excited with business of public hearing for Capital Grill Holdings.
Correct, Mr. Chairman. This is a public hearing on the application of Capital Grill Holdings, Inc., doing business as Capital Grill, for a conditional use to operate a use E5 Eating Place and E6 Eating Place hyphen drive-in restaurant at 2807 South Eagle Road in Newtown. I will mark for the record before we begin the proof of publication of notice of tonight's hearing that appeared in the advance of Bucks County on May 28th and June 4th, 2023, as Exhibit B1. A photograph depicting the posting of the property with notice of tonight's hearing will be marked as Exhibit B2. The CKS Engineers' Review Letter dated May 25th, 2023, will be marked as Exhibit B3, and the application and all its attachments will be marked as Exhibit B4. And those are the board exhibits for this hearing. Mr. Blackburn is present, representing the applicant. Mr. Blackburn?
Yes. Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Joe Blackburn from Whistle Pearlstein, here on behalf of the applicant, Capital Grill Holdings, LLC, with respect to its application concerning the approximately 8,500-square-foot tenant space located at 2807 South Eagle Road, although I'm sure members... Although I'm sure members of the Board and general public are aware, for the purposes of general orientation, that address and the, the site that is the subject of tonight's application is the former site of the Pier One Imports within the Village at Newtown Shopping Center. I didn't believe it or had trouble believing it, but that site has been, or Pier One, rather, has been closed and vacant for over three years now, with the exception of the periodic Vineyard Vines pop-up or whatever else, you know, little pop-up they might have going in there, despite, in fact, its location as a prominent anchor tenant in a recently renovated and for all intents and purposes very popular and desirable shopping center. As a part of tonight's application, the applicant proposes to operate an E-five and E-six eating place use within the eighty-five hundred square foot tenant space, which, again, I'm sure members of the Board and the Commission are generally aware and familiar, that being a Capital Grill. Capital Grill, for those that may not be aware, is a, what I'll call a very high-end steakhouse. And tonight's application, in fact, represents a significant departure for them. Of the sixty-three nationwide locations that Capital Grill currently occupies, every single one of them is in a major metropolitan area. This would be the absolute very first non-metropolitan offering of this Capital Grill skew. And I'm joined by Drew Johnson, the Director of Development from Darden, the parent company, who can talk about, you know, what it is that drew them to Newtown. I think, hopefully, that's pretty self-evident, but we can talk about that in a little bit. As a part of the application, we are in receipt of the CKS Engineer Review Letter that was marked as Board Exhibit B-three dated May twenty-five. I can confirm, as is typical, that that accurately summarizes and reflects the operational information anticipated for the operation of the Capital Grill. Again, as is customary, the two pieces of information I would supplement to that are with respect to deliveries and with respect to the updated restaurant percentage. With respect to deliveries in particular, similar to the prior application, Capital Grill, again, somewhat unique to this location, presently contemplates only opening for dinner and as a result, the deliveries would be significantly lower. In fact, only anticipate two to three deliveries needed a week, those being accommodated on a small box truck or even a parcel delivery service provider. With respect to the, the update on the restaurant breakdown, adding in the eighty-five hundred square foot and, I would say, the seven hundred square foot of outdoor patio included, the overall site-wide restaurant ratio comes to thirty-five point one percent. That is not that much bigger, you may note or recall from the last time we were here, because we have reduced from that overall restaurant count the since-closed Dolce and Friends location. So, yes, we are adding, but we are also subtracting the square footage. I would emphasize, clarify, you know, confirm that that percentage does include, on a site-wide basis, for every restaurant, any outdoor seating area. So the square footage for any and all outdoor seating is one hundred percent included in that calculation. And in fact, we're double-hit for it because we're not allowed, on a site-wide basis, to include that outdoor patio space in our denominator of that calculation. That denominator is based on the two hundred and twenty-seven thousand square feet of total floor area that were approved as a part of the overall land development in two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. That number does not change because we add outdoor area. So not only is the indoor area, oh, every square footage of every restaurant included, but also the outdoor area is included in the denominator, somewhat grossing that number up above what it probably otherwise would truly be. We did submit with our application, and I know even without hearing the last conversation on the last hearing, that over the past six years, the, the focus of pretty much every restaurant application in the Village at Newtown has been the sufficiency of parking. Two things to, to comment upon that. We did submit, or excuse me, we did prepare, and if I could, would you mind just passing? Thank you. We did prepare as a part of tonight's application, a traffic study, which you heard Mr. Driscoll reference and talked about at length at the Planning Commission. We'll talk about what the findings of that are momentarily, but before getting to that, submitted with our application was a floor plan. And that floor plan depicts a total seating of two hundred and thirty-six seats, both indoor and outdoor. However, as was discussed at length at the Planning Commission, that number is a little bit misleading because you'll note on the, the table on the right-hand side of that floor plan that there are, is a PRD, or excuse me, a PDR-one, a PDR-two, and a PDR-three. A private dining room one, private dining room two, and a private dining room three noted, totaling forty-eight seats. Those private dining rooms would be reserved for the holidays, the special events, not anticipated to be utilized on a day-in, day-out, every-night basis. That brings the anticipated nightly seating count, if you will, down to one eighty-eight. And then, again, I, I have said it every time we've been here for a restaurant. I was, you know, glad to hear someone other than me saying it a moment ago, but we also have twenty-six outdoor seats, which, for the reasons that you heard in the last application and you've heard me, you know, rap, prattling on about for the last six years, can't be considered to be duplicative of the indoor seats. We're not going to have a hundred percent occupancy inside and at the same time, a hundred percent occupancy outside. So when you consider all of those factors, the, the true and correct, realistic seating on a given night for, for this location would be a hundred and sixty-two. And again, we'll talk about why that's significantly less, both in count and in density than a number of the other restaurants, based on the, the experience that Capital Grill seeks to offer. But before we get to that, based on that hundred sixty-two, or even for that matter, based on the two hundred and thirty-six, if you'd like to stay at that, I have circulated a Langin Engineer memorandum summarizing the findings. I guess, Mr. Sanders, we can mark for identification as exhibit A-one?
Exhibit A-one will be the Langin memorandum dated June fifth, two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you. For those that may not immediately recall, Langin has been, again, for the past six or seven years, the project engineer and site engineer for the Village at Newtown, intimately involved with it and all its permutations and permits and approvals. In anticipation of tonight's application, we asked Langin to undertake a parking study, particularly on a site-wide basis, but also in particular in the vicinity of the former Pier One site. And what they found is summarized in a table on page two. And just by way of background, again, we are starting with one thousand seventy-six total parking spaces on the entire site. And as you might expect, over any three-day period, a Thursday, Friday, Saturday period, again, as would, I think, everyone expect, the highest intensity use, or excuse me, highest intensity occupancy of the site was at dinnertime on Saturday, six-thirty, at which time there were eight hundred and twenty-seven spaces occupied. That left, on a site-wide basis, at its most intensely utilized time, two hundred and fifty spaces available. Of those two hundred and fifty, a hundred and forty were in the immediate vicinity, directly surrounding and abutting and adjacent to the, what I'll call the former Pier One site, the, the proposed Capital Grill site. The rest of the hundred were sprinkled throughout, but there were, at the busiest time, on the busiest day, a hundred and forty spaces immediately abutting and available to the capital, the proposed Capital Grill site. We feel, and we will, you know, be happy to have Mr. Johnson confirm, based on his experience, that that is more than adequate based on Darden's needs and expectations and, you know, familiarity and, and experience with its sixty-five other sites nationwide. However, before even getting to that, one of the comments that was raised, or questions that was raised, rather, by Ms. Snyder at the Planning Commission was with respect to whether or not there was any consideration for valet. We are considering and in talks, would, would prefer, in fact, to provide a valet offering. We have been in communication with the fire department. As you may be aware, there is a, a fire lane along what I'll call the front of that building, which we have to work around and kind of maneuver around so as to not obstruct. But assuming that we are able to do so and those conversations are ongoing, our expectation would be, in addition to those a hundred and fifty immediately proximates of, approximate and available spaces to provide that valet offering. As I said, I am joined by Drew Johnson from, from Darden. Mr. Johnson is the Director of Development. I think probably can have him sworn, confirm the, the testimony and evidence and comments that you've heard to date and, or thus far, and also offer a little additional insight as to what has drawn Darden to Newtown and his experience with evaluating the sufficiency of parking. So if we can have him sworn, that'd be great. Can you state and spell your name, Mr. Johnson?
Drew Johnson, D-R-E-W-J-O-H-N-S-O-N.
And how are you employed, Drew?
So I am, yeah, the, I'm Brand Design Manager or Associate Director of Development at Darden Restaurants, overseeing Capital Grill as a concept nationwide.
And you heard the commentary that I offered here before you were sworn?
Yes.
And was all of that true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
And you, in your role, have overseen the opening of not only Capital Grill, but all of Darden's other restaurant skews nationwide, correct?
Yes, I oversee Eddie V's Season Fifty-two, Capital Burger, in addition to Capital Grill, and then associate and assist on other projects.
And what goes into your evaluation of a site for, let's stick to just Capital Grill? What goes into your evaluation for a site when you, or Darden is selecting a location for a new Capital Grill restaurant?
So, I mean, one of the founding pillars of Capital Grill is to look at areas that focus on sort of high financial, high political, and high sort of optical growth and value. It's part of the reason that the name is built on capital. And so we look at primarily, as Joe pointed out, areas in high-density urban situations to be able to draw those types of clientele into the space. So anywhere that we look to go is meant to sort of touch on and, and bring that sort of individuals to our brand to sort of maintain the high-end, both feel, look, and reputation of Capital Grill. Part of those considerations when we're looking at any individual site is both the optics from a, you know, anchor or position within a community to be able to draw people in, as well as to be able to provide them with the highest quality experience that they can possibly get. And that begins basically at the arrival point. So considerations on parking, valet, or the experience that somebody's going to get in arriving at a Capital Grill becomes a primary focus as we evaluate any individual site. We don't want to push people to have to either rely on the service that we're providing, but valet is typically provided complimentary. From that perspective, we also then do allow for a number of individuals within the vicinity when available to park immediately adjacent to any property. And we typically then look to provide something in excess to, so that the expectation is not everybody is coming with their immediate guests, but oftentimes, most people attending a Capital Grill are doing so as a party and not as an individual.
And so based on that anticipated panoply of things that you look at when identifying a new site, what did you find when you were looking at this site in particular, the, the South, South Eagle Road site here in Newtown?
From both a sighting perspective and from a parking sufficiency and location, it all is ideal from all of those particular avenues in order to make a good Capital Grill.
And you heard and have seen the parking study that was prepared by, by the landlord, Bricksmore, which identifies the available parking in the immediate vicinity of Capital Grill. Based on your firsthand experience with Capital Grill itself, you're confident that that is more than adequate for your needs?
Yes.
Would you come here if it wasn't?
No.
Talk a little bit about, we're at eighty-five hundred square feet and have, and let's, let's go all in. Let's call it all two thirty-six. Let's forget, you know, the breakout of the private dining rooms and the outdoor seating. How does that density, two hundred and thirty-six square, excuse me, two hundred and thirty-six seats in eighty-five hundred, in fact, if we're including the outdoor area, ninety-two hundred square feet area, compare to, from a table density and patron density standpoint, even to other restaurants in the, in the shopping center?
Yeah, so I mean, we'll typically operate because we're looking to create that sort of refined experience, privacy for those who want to have the private experience. We're sort of creating a significantly lower density in order to sort of maximize that customer experience and allow for that privacy. So we're typically looking at between thirty-five and forty gross square foot per person by comparison to some places, looking to sort of maximize. On getting higher density, it's usually between twenty to twenty-five gross square foot per person. And that really allows for us to, you know, provide the sort of privacy that most of our clientele is looking for as part of, you know, fine dining or steakhouse experience.
And we talked about how this compares to probably the most recent example that the Board will be familiar with, Ardana. By way of recommend, or reminder, Ardana has sixty, sixty-five hundred square feet area of area and two hundred and fifty seats for that, whereas we have eight hun, or excuse me, eighty-five hundred square feet and only two hundred and thirty-six. Again, if you, if you include all the private dining and all the outdoors. So a much higher area and even with the higher area, a lower density. So this would be a low-density restaurant by comparison.
Right. I mean, that's what, and that's typical for us when we're looking at fine dining concepts in order, once again, to create, you know, we're trying to give distance between individual tables, not trying to stack people up on top of each other. The booths are a little larger than what you'll find. The table's a little larger. And that's all in order for us to be able to deliver that sort of first-class experience.
Thanks. Goes without saying that we're aware of the typical, typical considerations or, or excuse me, conditions that would be customary for any conditional use, no outdoor amplified music, you know, things of that nature, all of which would be acceptable. Before you ask, Mr. Calabro, if you would be so inclined, I would take the opportunity, if, if you'd be so gracious, to take you up on your typical offer to expand the hours. As we noted at the outset, this would not anticipate to include lunch offerings at this time. We have included that, should it be an, an offering in the future. But again, given the dining experience that Capital Grill would be looked to serving, which would be, you know, not dining, rushing in and rushing out, we would potentially foresee the, a dining experience extending to twelve o'clock on a, you know, I won't say regular, but occasional basis. And in order to avoid any missteps with the hours of operation, I would amend the application to request that consideration. And with that, I'll certainly make myself or Mr. Johnson available for any questions that any members of the Board or, or public may have.
So far, I have a couple. While we're on it, could you review what the opening hours would be and the closing hours would be in the days of the week?
Yeah, so as reflected in the CKS Engineer Review Letter, and again, not that this is anticipated, but we've requested opening hours to be at ten o'clock and we would augment the previous eleven PM to twelve PM. But again, the anticipation is this, again, distinct from its other locations, be, anticipated to just be din, uh, excuse me, dinner, dining. And I think, going back for a moment, I apologize, that, that also does coincide with the other uses in what I'll call this quadrant of the center, right? You have Harvest, admittedly at the other end, that's probably similarly situated, lunch and dinner. Then you have Turning Point, breakfast, breakfast and maybe lunch. The Dolce has closed. Then you have Co., which, despite my, my, my best intentions for them, has kind of been relegated to more takeout, lost their sushi, and then Retail, which is, you know, closing at six or seven. So we do not envision any, which I think lends itself to the availability of a hundred and fifty parking spaces in the immediate vicinity, so.
The other question I had was, you, you did have a number of parking spaces of one sixty-two. What was that a reference? What was that referencing? Somewhere in, it was early in your presentation.
The, what I would call the actual seating, the actual typical Monday through, Monday through Saturday seating would only be a hundred and sixty-two, notwithstanding the fact that there are two hundred and thirty-six seats offered. Reason being, because forty-eight of those are in private dining rooms, three separate private dining rooms, which, look, as the Planning Commission said, you can't plan for Thanksgiving Eve, right? Is this shopping center going to be mobbed on Thanksgiving Eve? Yes, obviously. But on a typical day, we would certainly not expect the private dining rooms to be in use. And we would also not expect the outdoor dining to be in use in addition to the same twenty-six seats inside. When you net those out, that's where that one sixty-two came from.
And that's at any given time?
At any given time, yeah.
So they might turn over during the course of the evening.
Correct, for maybe two, two dinner services.
Likely going to be two turns, as, as Joe mentioned. Usually, we're expecting about an hour and a half to about a two-hour sort of seating time in order for somebody to properly enjoy all of the elements on offer.
Yep. Okay, so I had, I had that down as a hundred and sixty-two parking spaces, but it was seats.
Seats, yes.
Okay, got it. Planning Commission discussed employee parking at, at the rear buildings?
Yeah, and I'm sorry to interrupt, but let me jump in there because I did also commit. commit at the planning commission, which I would relay recommended approval by an eight-oh margin of this conditional use, that, that the, Brixmore, the landlord, has perhaps been not as diligent as it could be in enforcing some of the employee parking. I have reached out to Brixmore, which, as you know, we also represent them as a landlord, reminded them of their obligation to do so. They acknowledged that they probably have not been as diligent as they could be, admitted that, hey, look, this is probably going to be, you know, every six months, we're going to have to remind the tenants to remind their employees where they need to be parking. I can confirm that that reminder, which was not very gentle, has gone out already to the tenants. So our hope and expectation is that, as we heard at the planning commission, some of those spaces behind the McCaff, what I'll call the McCaffrey's building, and on the perimeter of the lots would be more principally used by the employees moving forward, at least until we have to remind them again.
Mr. Blackburn, if, if the board happens to grant this, would the applicant agree to a specific condition that all employees for this use shall park behind the building?
I don't know that there's sufficient spaces exclusively behind the building to accommodate all their employees. I can certainly commit to principally, and I think we could commit to principally behind and, you know, along the perimeter. I just don't know if there are enough spaces exclusively behind that building to accommodate the level of employees. But behind the building and along the perimeter, absolutely.
When you say perimeter, perimeter of what?
Well, the perimeter of what I'll call the Pier One, current Pier One parking lot. So kind of along South Eagle up to where the drive aisle comes in, that would be the perimeter of those, those spaces.
Okay, and can we finalize a condition regarding valet parking? I don't know how the board feels about it, but.
Our, we are subject, it's, the ball unfortunately is not in our court at this point. We, if it's available, I can say we will be implementing it. That is the preference and desire. We are in active communications or conversations with the fire department about where we can accommodate that, given the location of the fire lane. So an acceptable condition would be that if, you know, upon the approval of the fire department, absolutely, one-hundred percent, yes.
Okay, that was my last question.
Sorry.
Mr. Sanders got it.
Darn.
I have a question.
Yeah, I see Ellen first, and then I'll go back to you. Right me.
Okay, so I'm looking, while looking at these plans, it appears to me that the outdoor seating is going to be, if you're looking at it straight from the parking lot, it's going to be on the right.
Correct, kind of, not parallel to, but along South Eagle, yeah.
Are you going to be asking to add, add a patio or add more space there, or is it there enough there now?
That's all existing. That area where those, where those twenty-six outdoor seats is all existing. We would be proposing to install some sort of protective slash decorative bollard along those areas so as to, you know, not have any conflict between cars maneuvering in that little, little stretch of parking spaces. Probably something very similar to what you see up at Harvest right now. They have those big, massive planters that, I don't even know how they get them in there, but something similar to or along the lines of that, which is both aesthetic and safety-oriented.
I see your lion statues up front, too.
I think that's a staple, yeah.
Yeah, that would be a brand staple across the entire portfolio, yeah.
Mr. Mack?
Mr. Blackburn, you speak very quickly, and I may have missed something while I was looking at my notes, specifically about the square footage calculation, and I hope you don't mind if I ask you to reiterate some of that.
Sure.
In regard to, you know, outdoor seating areas, how does that figure in or not figure into the calculation?
It, so to, to readdress, and hopefully I'm not speaking too quickly for you, that's what's important, to, to reiterate.
I'm old, Joe. You know what I mean?
He's also making the decision.
Exactly, so absolutely. The outdoor seating for every restaurant is absolutely included in that percentage. As we sit here today, that thirty-five point seven percent includes every square foot of outdoor seating area, and in fact, some that isn't even utilized, but has been approved. What I was attempting to ham-handedly explain mathematically, which, and this may be my, my difficulty here, that square footage for the outdoor patio, we do not get to count in the denominator of that equation, right?
The denominator is the bottom or the top?
Well, element, I think D is down, if I remember correctly, so denominator is down. That's the way I always remember it. You can use that one. But yeah, so when the, when the project was approved in two thousand seventeen, two-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand square feet of floor area was approved. We discussed and decided years ago, we weren't going to allow that number to be grossed up by adding outdoor patio space because that square footage wasn't approved as a part of that floor area.
That, that was decided, you said?
Correct, yes, that was several conditional uses ago. If you want to change it, hey, that benefits us. Don't, don't, you know, I'm happy to allow that. But right now, as we sit here today, we don't get to include that outdoor patio area in that denominator, but we do include it in the numerator, top, of that equation. So when we're, you know, looking at it as a fraction, the total square footage on the top line of the, the fraction includes both the indoor and the outdoor space, and the bottom line only includes the indoor site-wide space, two-twenty-seven.
Very interesting, because I made the calculation of thirty-seven point five percent based on, without patios in the numerator, right?
Without them in the numerator.
So if it were included in the numerator, it would be, in total, would be more than thirty-seven point five. I, I would like to ask Brixmore through you, maybe, to give us a clear answer to the actual percentage, if this restaurant is approved, with all the additional outdoor seating and the patios that have been added since then, it might clarify some things.
Absolutely, and I similarly can commit to do that. In any event, regardless of that, I think we can all agree we're well shy of the forty-five percent, which is the cap, but.
Well, we may or may not be well shy of it, I don't know. How do you spell that? Well shy, okay. In any case, I had a question for, I'm sorry, the other witness, maybe?
Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Johnson. You said that Capital Grill usually seeks out areas of high-density urban. Do you anticipate that Newtown will be classified more as a high-density urban area in the near future, and is that why you want to come here?
No, I, I think, the, the point I was making is, is that our typical clientele that we're sort of, like, that the brand is built around identifying and catering to normally find themselves within high-density urban areas. The part of what's drawing us into this area is that we find a similar clientele in this vicinity that matches what we're, the clientele we're seeking to serve, in this sort of, you know, I don't want to call it an outlying community, but a separate community from a specific urban area. So we're able to reach a, a group that would not be within an urban center, that meet our primary core clientele outside of the urban center. And so that's where, I think, part of what's drawing us into the area is being able to serve those clients not central to a big city. And so we can maintain the number of people coming to the restaurant without needing millions of people in order to do it because we'll be serving a, a community that has people that would be interested in using our service.
Okay, thanks very much.
Mr. Calabro, Mr. Davis?
Just a few questions, Mr. Johnson. I guess for Mr. Johnson, I have a, could you, could you just let us know what, what major metropolitan areas you are in? Just a name for you.
Yeah, so we'll start, originally, so Boston, D C, New York, L A, Miami, Kansas City, Minneapolis, Chicago, Philadelphia, Pittsburgh, we're in Providence, yeah, so Charlotte.
And how many multitudes of areas in Bucks County are you in?
With, with just the Capital Grill SKU, or?
Yeah.
None currently?
So Newtown would be the only Capital Grill in the Bucks County area?
Correct.
Okay. And our nearest competitor in regards to another Capital Grill would be Philadelphia?
We have one in King of Prussia as well. I don't know if, which ones, King of Prussia, Cherry Hill, and Philadelphia. So any one of, well, that's probably on the radius of about.
Princeton or anything like that?
No, nothing in Princeton. Next nearest would be in sort of the New York vicinity, Persephone or Paramus.
Okay, so again, the only place you picked in Bucks County is Newtown?
Is Newtown.
Okay, great. I guess my other questions are for Mr. Blackburn. I appreciate that. Thank you. Mr. Blackburn?
Yes, sir.
How are you today?
Never better.
I appreciate your, the way you finagled the numbers with Dolce Corini not being in business right now. But shouldn't they still be in the calculations until they are no longer considered a restaurant?
I take exception with finagled, but, you know, one, no, because it's, it's nothing right now. And if we were to come back in with that space, we would obviously add that number back into the, into the numerator. But what I can also.
You want to say finagle?
No, what I was gonna say, what I can also confirm, I think I'm allowed to do this, is that there is not a restaurant going back in to that location. There is a retail tenant, which I think may have been, had some conversations with township about that space. So not only would I not think it appropriate to kind of hold that space as restaurant, because it could be anything. It, it, it could be absolutely anything.
Correct, and I understand that, but I mean, as of today, when that, when somebody looks at that building, they think of Dolce Corini, they think of a restaurant.
Certainly.
So to completely negate it as a restaurant, this retail operation would have to occupy it to take that square footage off the calculations?
Uh, yes. Well, we're taking it off the calculations because it's not a restaurant.
Yes, as an answer, thank you. Now, just, just in regards to the Capital Grill, where it's, where it's proposed at the Pier One, you're going to enter the same front door area where Pier One would be?
Correct.
Correct? So to the, I'm standing there, so to the right where the sidewalk area is, that's where the twenty-six seats would be on the outside?
The sidewalk area on, as you look at, look at it to the right, would be where the outdoor seating is, yes.
Now, is that sidewalk area, I'm sure you, you probably calculated, is that wide enough for these twenty-six seats?
Yeah.
Or does additional cement, cement have to be put in to make the area bigger?
No, there are, there are no site improvements or revisions contemplated whatsoever for that. The sidewalk, you know, along, I think, fair to say, the, the entire perimeter of the site within that overhang is, it's upwards of twelve to fourteen feet. So there is, and again, if you look at the floor plan that was submitted with the application, you can see that there's ample room for those, those tables in, in that area, which is, again, presently, as we sit here today, paved and in fact, also covered. So absolutely no change to the exterior look of the building or site whatsoever.
Okay, and there's enough room to maneuver as far as servers?
Yes, yeah.
And patrons going back and forth. Now, there's going to be an exit from the interior to the patio, or can people just walk onto the patio from the outside?
No, it would be accessed from, if, again, if you look at the floor plan, there's a door that would be the only access point to that outdoor seating area. Although, well, not, there is an emergency access on what I'll call the south side of that outdoor seating area, but that would not be for getting into.
Where the kitchen's at, there's a, there's a, is that the exit there, I'm seeing? On the back end?
It's not quite that far down, it's about.
Oh, to get off the patio, I'm talking about.
Yeah, off the patio, there is a.
To get out of the building.
To get off the patio, you don't have to go through the building to get out of the patio, if there was an emergency.
Now, in, in regards to, I know you had mentioned things about these big potted plants and so on, but would you consider like a wrought iron railway going across, kind of like how I think it's the chopped is at the other end near McCaffrey's?
So, I mean, what would be proposed in addition to being able to sort of provide the safety factor feature from the bollards, as we would look to put in some sort of railing element, once again, to provide continuity to the building, sort of keep the space separate from the public right of way, and then allow for, you know, us to likely supply some plants or something decorative to, once again, sort of screen off a little bit of the experience from the patio to the parking lot?
And this, this seating will be available, provided the seasons are in conjunction with somebody sitting outside?
Correct. I think what we typically find as part of the brand is, once again, going and spending your money on, on a high-end experience and typically dressing in a sort of, of manner that, that sort of matches that, as weather gets warmer or even sort of more seasonally hot, we tend to find that people shy away from using patios because you typically don't want to dress up and sit outside and sweat. So I would say that, you know, we're really looking for very ideal conditions in terms of being able to supply occupancy onto the patio versus, you know, your typical, you know, June or July, like a July-August day.
Gotcha. Let me just see here. In regards to the parking calculations, and Mr. Blackburn, maybe you would know this, isn't it, the parking is not separated by each individual use, correct?
Correct.
It's all according to the total square footage of the total development?
Correct.
And that's how it was calculated, I think, two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, by the zoning.
Sixteen, I think, yeah.
Sixteen.
By the zoning hearing board.
By the zoning hearing board. That had nothing to do with the body of supervisors. The zoning hearing board took care of that, and that's why the calculations are such.
Correct.
Okay, so it doesn't matter, when, when something comes before us, whether it's Capital Grill, Dolce Corini, whatever, it's according to the total square footage of the whole development, correct?
The, the parking is, yes, yeah, absolutely. And I, and if I may, I think the, the intent of that forty-five percent cap on restaurants in particular was intended to be the measure by which we don't have a hundred percent restaurants and, which admittedly are a large parking driver, you know, going in the entire site, and that four-point-seven per thousand then becoming inadequate, because I think, you know, that, that's what the intent, I believe, was that, for that forty-five percent cap, yes.
And, and my final, I guess, square footage question, if we're at thirty-seven, leaving us with what, another eight square, square feet left to get to forty-five, if my.
Eight percent?
If my mathematics are correct, I mean.
You're gonna make me pull it out. Are you asking for how many more square feet of?
Well, how many, yeah, what, what does the eight percent revert to in square footage? So if we're looking at a, at a particular building, and again, I'll just throw, I'm just using Dolce Corini as a name, but what would the square footage have to be to fulfill that additional eight percent to get to the forty-five? Do you have any idea?
So eight percent is eighteen, just a hair over eighteen thousand square feet. Again, the total square footage of the site wide is two-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand and change. Eight percent of that is eighteen thousand and change.
Which is, which is a pretty large area, eighteen thou, I mean.
That would be more than two of these.
Okay.
I, I don't think that thirty-seven point five percent is accurate because you mentioned putting in the patio and outdoor seating in the numerator, which would raise that. So I don't think we have yet an accurate number. And that's what I was asking, if you could obtain a more accurate number that included the patios and so on.
Well, we've been including the patios the entire time, and our number is thirty-five point seven.
Thirty-five percent, not thirty-seven point seven?
Correct, thirty-three-five point seven.
That's because you're deducting.
That does deduct Dolce Corini out of that equation, yes.
Now, that, that eighteen thousand square feet, is there, I guess, is there anything, not, not that it can't, cannot become available, but is there eighteen thousand square feet available to fulfill that right now?
Oh, yeah, I'm, there's several vacancies in this strip, well, two, twenty-five hundred square feet of the balance of this site. Pier One was ten thousand, so there's another, or excuse me, fifteen hundred. They would be much smaller, I would say. You do have the, the vacancy between Lululemon and Ardona, which, that's probably your biggest, that's probably about ten thousand square feet there. And then I would imagine that ten that ten thousand plus or minus, and then probably a, a lo, a few two thousands, fifteen hundreds sprinkled throughout the site, yeah.
Okay. But a- as, as far as, uh, getting up to that forty-five percent, it, it will not affect any kind of parking calculations, because those, those square footages would have already been calculated into the total figure of the total development.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clabro.
Can I ask one more question, please?
Sure.
When would you be, if you should get all the approvals you need, when would you be looking to open?
Um, as you might expect, a Pier One, converting a, a Pier One box store to a high-class restaurant is, uh, quite an undertaking. I think the lead time expected is about six months, um, for that, but I'll defer to the, uh, Development Director to probably provide.
Yeah. So, so based on the amount of work, it's typically between about a, a seven-to-eight month-long build, given all required permits and landlord work in, we're sort of targeting what would be late summer of next year, tentatively.
Mr. Blackburn, that reminds me. EDUs?
There are, um, currently, um, two hundred and thirty EDUs of, available, uh, and two hundred and ten, including this, would be, for, excuse me, for restaurants alone, um, there are, uh, two hundred and ten, or this use would bring that, the total restaurant count to two hundred and ten. I think there's two hundred and seventy or two hundred and ninety, I apologize, um, available site-wide. So we are fifty to sixty EDUs on a site-wide basis below what the s, the entire site can accommodate.
And I guess you worked in coordination with the Sewer Authority?
Correct.
In regards to, uh, grease traps and so on?
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah. They are fastidious about that.
Any other questions? Opening up to the public. We have a member of the public. Please state your name.
Hello, my name's Bradley Cooper, Newtown grant resident since nineteen ninety-nine, and I've seen the changes of the Newtown Township Village, um, for what it used to be, what it is today, and it's horrendous. It's disgusting, and it's a nightmare. You need to have a driver's license to drive through that, uh, shopping center because of how it's poorly designed. Uh, why can't this gentleman's business go right where the pizza places? Why do they have to take this place? They're gonna tell you why this place is better than the pizza place, but it's already ba, built to be a restaurant. They could design it or do whatever, but they want this place. Now, as we know, there's a lot of people who are seniors who live in Newtown, who've been here for forty, fifty years, um, and they can't walk. They're gonna try to park as close as they can. There's the bookstore, there's the Learning Express, and there's the party fair. You can't get to them because of all the other restaurants that's in that area. It's an absolute nightmare. Even if there is fifteen hundred parking spots, people aren't gonna park seven miles down to walk all the way down to the restaurant. They're gonna try to park as close as they can, and, um, they're gonna push everyone down to where the party fair is. When the, uh, Turning Point Restaurant's there, you can't really get a good parking spot to get to the, um, party fair, because you gotta get pushed all the way to the end, because how many people wanna eat? And then you're talking about them spending minimumly forty-five minutes an hour because of, um, the busyness of the, um, patrons that are gonna be in that, uh, place, uh, patroning that business, sort of ever. So I don't think this is a good idea. I think this is just creating more problems and issues that are going to lead to more issues and problems. And we don't even know if that, uh, pizza place, Dolce Corini, could turn into another pizza place or another restaurant, which causes more havoc. So it's just a domino effect. So I think this needs to be, uh, reconsidered or put in another spot that can be, uh, more, uh, acceptable to additional parking that that place is gonna cause to the other businesses that people wanna patron. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Mr. Sanders, if we were to frame a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If the Board is of a mind, it would be a motion to grant the application of Capital Grill Holdings Inc. doing business as Capital Grill for a conditional use to permit it to operate an E-five eating place and E-six eating place drive-in restaurant to be located at twenty-eight oh seven South Eagle Road in the village at Newtown Shopping Center, subject to compliance with the following conditions. One, compliance with the CKS Engineers Review Letter of May twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three. Two, the hours of operation shall be ten AM to twelve midnight, seven days a week. Three, there shall be no more than five to ten employees in the first shift and twenty-five to thirty for the second shift, with no more than two shifts anticipated, and all employees shall principally park behind the building and along the perimeter of the parking lot adjacent to the site. Four, there shall be no hazardous flammable nor explosive materials stored or used on the premises. Should this change, the applicant must immediately notify the landlord and township of the nature of the materials being stored or used by the business and how they are being rendered safe for storage and/or use. Five, the business will not use nor disseminate noxious, toxic, nor corrosive fumes, smoke, odor, or dust. Further, no loud noises nor vibrations, nor objectionable heat glare, nor radiation will extend beyond the property line, nor will it create any other objectionable conditions that may endanger public health and safety. Outdoor speakers, intercoms, uh, or music are not permitted. Six, the applicant must coordinate its deliveries with those of its neighboring businesses and must not accept deliveries during normal business hours. The delivery vehicle must be of a size and weight to allow them to move safely, both in front of and behind the premises. Seven, the applicant will provide will-serve letters from both the Newtown Sewer Authority and the appropriate water service provider for its business. Eight, the applicant shall make its business completely ADA compliant under both state and federal law. Nine, uh, any and all fees and costs due and owing to Newtown Township must be paid in full prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy by the township. Uh, and finally, if the fire department approves, the applicant shall provide complimentary valet parking for all patrons. And that would be the motion.
Would someone like to make that motion?
Uh, yes, those are all acceptable. Thank you. Apologies.
Motion, we have a second? I'll second it. Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion from the board?
I do have a comment. Uh, six or seven years ago, when Bricksmore came to us to, to this board to redesign the shopping center, I was the only no vote on it. And the reason was, I had serious concerns about the parking and the traffic. And I was defeated, and I hope for the best. Um, I don't, whatever paperwork we have or numbers and whatnot, numerator, denominator, it's a mess over there. Traffic's terrible, parking's terrible, and it's the number one complaint I get from residents coming to me is about that shopping center. Uh, so I certainly have no problem with Capital Grill. I'm honored that you decided to look at Newtown. Uh, I just don't think that shopping center's a fit, so I'm gonna be a no for that reason. So, just wanna say that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Anyone else? Seeing no other comments, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving the conditional use for Capital Grill, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries three to two. Okay.
Okay, thank you. That closes this hearing.
Thank you.
Uh, the next public hearing, uh, the third of three, is a public hearing on the application of Capital Grill Holdings Inc. for a transfer of a restaurant liquor license to twenty-eight oh seven South Eagle Road and consideration of a resolution approving the application. Um, I will mark for the record, um, as we open this hearing, uh, a copy of the proof of publication of notice of this hearing as required by the liquor code, uh, and we will mark that as Board Exhibit B one. Uh, that notice was published twice in the advance of Bucks County, once on May twenty-eighth and once again on June fourth, two thousand twenty-three. Um, counsel, uh, is present, uh, separate counsel is present, uh, for, uh, Capital Grill, uh, on this liquor license transfer, uh, public hearing. Um, would counsel care to identify themselves?
Yeah, and, and just before, uh, well, he can certainly identify himself.
Good evening. My name's Mark Kozar. I'm with the law firm of Flaherty and O'Hara. Uh, just as an aside, our sole area practice is liquor law and liquor licensing. We do it throughout the state and nationally.
Thank you, Mr. Kozar. Mr. Blackburn?
You're through with me shortly, but I did just wanna provide, uh, a, a brief kind of handoff. Obviously, the, the natural corollary to the conditional use, given the prominence of, um, this applicant, uh, this use in particular was a liquor license transfer as well. Um, we are certainly aware of this board's, um, recent position with respect to, I will say, its last application for, uh, for this nature. But what I think, um, you will hear tonight, um, is that, uh, liquor, uh, alcohol is a very, very minor and insignificant component of this, um, this use. Um, nobody is going there, uh, to spend twenty dollars a drink, uh, you know, to, to hang out at the bar. Um, and moreover, on a, a fluid ounce basis, that percentage breakdown that you're gonna hear is even, even more reduced from, um, certainly, uh, the other uses, uh, that, that you would expect to see in this area. So, uh, without further ado, I'm gonna step aside. Uh, Mr. Kozar is, uh, is gonna handle you from here, and if there's any certainly, any site-wide questions, I'll, I'll jump back up. But, uh.
Thank you, Mr. Blackburn, for that wonderful introduction. Um, I'm here, obviously, on behalf of Capital Grill Holdings Inc., uh, to request that you pass a resolution, uh, permitting the intermunicipal transfer of liquor license from outside Newtown Township to within, pursuant to the revised liquor code, Title forty-seven, Section four sixty-one B three, for use by Capital Grill at twenty-eight oh seven South Eagle Road. Uh, in order for you to make a decision on our request, um, uh, let me provide you a little background on Capital Grill. Capital Grill is a subsidiary of Darden Restaurants Inc., which is a publicly traded company headquartered in Orlando, Florida. Darden is the world's largest casual restaurant company. Through subsidiaries, uh, Darden owns and operates over eighteen hundred restaurants in North America and employs over six, a hundred and sixty thousand people. They have a number of concepts with, uh, with which I'm sure you're familiar, Olive Garden, Cheddar, Cheddar Scratch Kitchen, Bahama Breeze, Capital Grill, Long Horse Steakhouse, Seasons Fifty-two, Eddie V's, and Capital Burger. Capital Grill is Darden's flagship restaurant. Darden is very selective, uh, as to where they open Capital Grill restaurants. There are only sixty-three nationwide. Compared that to eight hundred and eighty-four Olive Garden restaurants nationwide, there are only three Capital Grills in Pennsylvania, as we heard Mr. Johnson, uh, testify, one in Pittsburgh, one in Philadelphia, and one in King of Prussia. On the other hand, there are thirty-seven Olive Garden restaurants in Pennsylvania. So you can see how selective they are with their flagship. Um, they look for municipalities, uh, and, and as Mr. Johnson and Mr. Blackburn said, this is kind of their first foray out of a centralized urban area. And, uh, it's a ringing endorsement for a municipality to be chosen by Capital Grill, uh, for a restaurant. Capital Grill is known nationally for its dry-aged, hand-carved and award, hand-carved steaks and award-winning wine lists. Their menu also features an assortment of appetizers, soups, salads, and homemade desserts. Uh, if you look at Tab seven on the handout, there's a menu there. Capital Grill offers a welcoming and club-like dining experience. Capital Grill treats its guests as though they are members of a private club, but is open to the public. The general exterior, uh, appearance of this location is, is a Tab one. Uh, it's a rendering of what the exterior will look like. Uh, Tab six contains renderings, uh, of the interior of the restaurant. Um, there's gonna be no live music at Capital Grill. Um, there's no takeout beer. Uh, as Mr. Blackburn mentioned, uh, the hours of operation will be Monday through Sunday, eleven AM to eleven PM, although, uh, as, again, as Mr. Blackburn points, pointed out, uh, there might be times where they would stay open till midnight. Um, as been repeatedly said, there are seating for two hundred and thirty-six, which includes the, uh, outdoor area. Um, this store, this restaurant will employ in the neighborhood of sixty-five full and part-time people. Alcohol is served as a complement to the food at Capital Grill and not the main attraction. Uh, alcohol is served at all Capital Grill restaurants, which makes for a consistent national product. Uh, the breakdown of food to alcohol sales are seventy percent food and thirty percent alcohol. Uh, as Mr. Blackburn alluded to, uh, thirty percent alcohol, quite frankly, is not that high compared to a number of other le, restaurants. But if you look at the price per drink, uh, at a Capital Grill, it's not dollar beers down at the local bar or, you know, two fifty, uh, mixed drinks. Um, we're talking about quality alcohol service at a premium price, which makes that thirty percent really less than, than what it is. Um, Capital Grill and Darden in general, uh, have an extensive in-house alcohol training program. In addition, uh, Pennsylvania liquor code requires that all servers, uh, receive RAMP training, stands for Responsible Alcohol Management Program. It's a program that was designed by the PLCB and the Bureau of Liquor Control Enforcement, teaches people how to recognize fake IDs, how to recognize it to, visibly intoxicated persons. Uh, this isn't gonna be the kind of place that a person under twenty-one's gonna try to get in, drink. Number one, they can't afford the drinks, and number two, they can't afford the food. Um, Capital Grill is a responsible owner. They're making a significant investment in the Newtown Township. That investment will be protected by responsible management and well-trained employees. And for those reasons, uh, we request you pass a resolution permitting the transfer of the liquor license in the Newtown Township for use by Capital Grill. And, uh, I'm just gonna, I don't think we need to re swear him, but, uh, Mr. Johnson, um, you heard my presentation.
Well, let, let's re swear, Mr. Johnson. Different hearing, different proceeding, so I would like to do that. Thank you.
Sure. Mr. Johnson, you heard my presentation. Um, if you were to testify, would your testimony be essentially the same thing that I've said in this presentation?
Yes.
Thank you. And if the board has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer the questions.
I have a couple.
Sure.
Have you done any comparison of liquor licenses across the county in Bucks County?
As to?
Uh, population centers and how many liquor license per municipality?
Well, it, you know, in two thousand and one, the law was changed to permit the transfer of licenses within a county. And when they passed that law, it eliminated the local quota of licenses. The only time you ever look at local quota of licenses is to determine whether or not an intermunicipal transfer hearing needs to be held. For example, if the quota in, in Newtown Township was five licenses and you only had four licenses, we wouldn't have to be here tonight. We could, we could file directly with the PLCB. So municipal quotas really don't count for anything unless you're looking to see whether you need to have an intermunicipal transfer hearing.
Okay. Uh, I, I did do some, I did look up on, uh, Liquor Control Board website how many restaurant licenses were in, in a number of, a number of mus, municipalities. Um, and it, just to give us a baseline, Newtown is at, how many now? Fourteen or fifteen?
I, I did not even look at.
Okay. You just knew that.
I, I knew it was over quota.
Over, over twenty-eight, twenty thousand.
It's at fifteen just for restaurants.
For restaurants, correct.
Total with other venues, there's twenty-one liquor licenses. And? And the quota is, I assume, was set up for some specific reason, uh, related to the health and well-being of citizens. It's just not irrelevant, as you are claiming. Uh, no, it, it's totally irrelevant. It, it, it is. It, it, the only time it really matters is to determine whether or not an intermunicipal hearing needs to be held. matters is to determine whether or not an intermunicipal hearing needs to be held. And with respect to your, your numbers, the only licenses that count against the quota are restaurant liquor licenses and eating place liquor licenses, and there are no eating license, eating place liquor licenses in Newtown Township.
If I may...
Sure.
Go on. I just have a couple other comparisons here. Uh, New, Doylestown Borough has a population of about eighty-three hundred, somewhere in there. If, if I've got these numbers right and I can, went to the census for it, uh, and they have thirty-two, uh, restaurant liquor licenses. I, I tried to do, compare apples to apples and oranges to oranges here. Um, Middletown, this is one of our surrounding municipalities, they have a population of about forty-six, forty-seven thousand, and that would be, if you went, if you did the strict calculation of the way I think John's referring to, it would be, um, sixteen, sixteen licenses, and they have twenty-six. Uh, I could, I could go on. Ben Salem has sixty thousand and fifty-six, uh, restaurant liquor licenses, but then that would be what, that, that's kind of what Ben Salem is, you know, typical there.
Well, here's, here's an example I use out of, out of, uh, from the Pittsburgh area. There's a municipality, a little bit western edge of Pittsburgh called Monroeville. Monroeville has a quota of nine licenses. They have forty-three restaurant liquor licenses. You know what I say about that? You wanna be a municipality where liquor licenses wanna come into, because they come into a municipality that has a, a vibrant economy. There's another part of Pittsburgh called Penn Hills, which doesn't have a very vibrant economy. The licenses are leaving Penn Hills left and right. Um, the, the desire to move a liquor license into the municipality is essentially saying to you, to the municipality, you have a vibrant economy. We think we, we can do business here, and we can make money here, and we can be successful here.
And, and we're, we're right in the middle. I mean, there's, there's, those examples that I gave that were, were higher. Uh, then, then there's a couple of, uh, municipalities like Yardley and Lower Makefield that have fewer, uh, than, than their quota of, of liquor licenses. Does that, is it, is it calculated by county then?
Yes. The quota is now a county quota, and, and as I said before, the only time you look at a municipal quota is determine whether or not an intermunicipal transfer needs to take place.
Okay. And I would just, and the other comment I would make is to maybe restate that the alcohol consumption in a place like Capital Grill is, uh, what's the word? Is complimentary to the food.
You're absolutely right. It's sec, it's secondary to their, their food offerings. Capital Grill's known for their, their dry-aged steaks. Um, they're not known for their martinis.
And I wouldn't be going to have glasses and glasses of wine, 'cause they're too expensive.
[laughing]
Okay. Uh, are there questions from the board? Okay. Seeing none, I'll, uh, open it to the public. Any public comment? Going once, going twice. Uh, Mr. Sander, if we were to frame a motion?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, this is, um, a much shorter motion than the prior two. This is, uh, merely a motion to adopt Resolution number twenty-twenty-three dash R dash twelve, approving the transfer of restaurant liquor license number R dash one eight zero eight five into Newtown Township at twenty-eight oh seven South Eagle Road, Newtown, PA.
All right. Uh, any other questions from the board?
What's that?
Oh, yes, we have to make a motion.
Yeah, we need a motion. Thank you, Mr. Calabro.
Thank you. Keeping us honest here. Uh, so we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Now I can ask if there's any other comments from the board. And seeing none, I'll call the, yes?
I'd just like to say that, uh, I agree. Um, the Capital Grill is, I would say, a feather in our cap. It's, uh, you know, no, I'm not fond of more liquor licenses. But with the Capital Grill comes a liquor license. There's no doubt about it. Um, you wouldn't have a Capital Grill without a liquor license. So, uh, I see it as a positive for our township and, uh, something special.
Can I make a comment? Uh, I heard a description of, uh, the, uh, role of liquor in the Capital Grill as being insignificant. And so if it were so insignificant, maybe you should be able to do good business without a liquor license. I wanted to ask a question, if I may, uh, however. Does the Capital Grill have a bar area?
Yes, it does.
How much seating is in that bar area?
Uh, I don't know off the top of my head. Joe, do you know? And, and I, I do want to correct you. I did not say insignificant.
You didn't say it.
You did.
No. One of the representatives said it, and we could go back to the record. Can you find that? All right. Can't do that. So much for that.
The, the floor plan that was submitted with both this application and the prior application identify that there are sixteen seats at the bar.
Sixteen, okay.
One-six.
That's what it looked like to me as well. That's what it looked like to me as well, is counting them while you were talking. So, um, we have a motion and a second. We had, any other comments? Call the questions. All those in favor of the resolution to approve liquor license, uh, for Newtown Town, uh, transfer of liquor license to Newtown Township, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion carries three to two.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. That concludes the public hearings, Mr. Chairman. Um, if we want to move right along to land developments, we have Walsh Minor Subdivision at three-eighty-five Stoopville Road, and, uh, we'll ask the applicant and Mr. McGinnis to, uh, come forward on that one. Um, this is not a public hearing, um, so, uh, I'd like to thank Hope for her services, uh, as usual. Much appreciated. Um, and, um, I think it's appropriate, Mr. Chairman, to ask, uh, the applicant to, uh, make a, a short presentation to the board, allow the board to ask any questions, certainly allow the public to, uh, comment, and then I can frame a, a motion for the board to consider. I think that would be helpful.
All right. Thank, thank you, Mr. Sander. And good evening, Board. Mike McGinnis again from Begley Carlin here on behalf of the applicant in this matter, Matthew Walsh. Uh, the subject property is located at three-eighty-five Stoopville Road. This is a minor subdivision application. The property is in the CM Conservation Management District. The underlying property is approximately six point three one acres. It's located at the corner of Linton Hill Road and Stoopville. Uh, I have Mike Walsh with me this evening, as well as Doug Wade from Jones Engineering, who's prepared the underlying subdivision plan. Uh, briefly, our proposal is to subdivide the property to create two parcels, approximately three acres apiece. There are no improvements depicted on the plan that is before you for consideration. Uh, my client has been leasing the property. The plan is to sell the underlying property, the six point three acres, uh, at which point the new property owner will, uh, end up demolishing the existing home, which is on the lot, and then the owner builder would submit plans at that time. It's our assumption to the township, uh, subject, of course, to township requirements. We've reviewed the letters from CKS and Remington and Vernick. Everything is a, will comply. Uh, we'll add a note on the plan that street trees are required, which again will be handled as part of the, uh, future development of the homes. Uh, there is one very small housekeeping note, uh, in one of the Remington and Vernick review letters. There's a note that, uh, twenty-two dash five sixteen and twenty-two dash five seventeen, uh, may, uh, necessitate, I think, I think the exact phrase is, future development or construction may require, uh, necessity to provide sidewalks and curbing. Again, I'm not sure. I'll defer to Mr. Sander as to whether that's a waiver request. I don't believe it is. Uh, we will acknowledge that comment as a comment in the review letter, again, subject to any future development plans which may be submitted. Uh, at this time, there are no improvements, so I don't, I don't consider that a waiver.
Understood, but you may not come back for land development approval if you build one house at a time. So this may be the only opportunity for the board to consider that matter.
And if it's required, then, uh, we're, we'll ask for it. We aren't anticipating coming back at all on this, but we acknowledge the fact that a, a future developer, uh, may seek to not install curbing and sidewalks. There are no curbing sidewalks in the surrounding area of this parcel, so, uh, if it is a waiver request, we would ask the board to consider granting that waiver request. Everything else is acknowledged in the review letters and/or will comply comments. I, as I indicated at the outset, I'm more than happy to have Mr. Wade, uh, provide a, a brief summary of the plan which is before you for consideration, if that is desired. Otherwise, we'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have.
What would the, what would the board prefer?
Well, questions from the board would, would be appropriate if there are questions on this, uh, application?
Uh, I'll, I'll start. Just to reiterate, all the, the review letters and the, uh, response letter, uh, all came back, will, will, will complies or...
Correct.
You're advised that, uh, our professionals found, had, had, had questions for you, and you acknowledged those. Okay. Um, and you will, this, this is CM.
Correct.
And it's a six-acre lot, six point three-two?
Yeah, I think six point three-one acres, that's right.
Um, and it's being divided so that they're each three-acre lots?
Correct. More or less, yes, essentially.
Okay. So it would still fit the CM?
Yes, we procured a, a letter. There was some question on CKS's end, and, um, Barry Izette provided a letter saying that the plan is in conformance with the underlying zoning requirements.
Okay. Any other comments from the board, questions? Okay, Mr. Matt, go ahead.
Um, since this is a conservation management area, uh, are you proposing to, uh, clear a lot of trees from this property?
We're proposing no site work with respect to the subdivision.
Okay, so that would come in separately when there's a developer who wants to develop on that land. We'd have to talk to them about that.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, this is, this is a subdivision, and there will be land development.
The...
That, that's why I raised the point earlier. There may not be land development.
Okay.
Unless they wanna build two or more houses at the same time, they can come in for a building permit for each lot. Now, with the building permit submission, those building permits will be reviewed by township staff and commented on, and all ordinances and applicable laws will have to be complied with. But they will not be, chances are they will not be coming back for land development approval.
Okay. Stormwater management requirements, as Mr. Sander said, if the builder at a later date elects to, uh, for example, build one home and then demolish the structure and build a separate home, they would have to be complied with and be in dialogue with Remington and Vernick as part of that, uh, process, if that is the route that they choose to go.
I think that's, sorry, time around. I'm finally getting it.
Sorry, thanks.
Thank you.
Do you have buyers already for these lots?
Yes, we do.
And they're separate buyers?
No, it's, oh, okay, they're, yes. But the same, if you can address, the, the mechanism that these houses would be built, we had discussed. If you can just address the board very quickly.
Okay, yeah, they're two separate, two separate buyers that are gonna be building individual houses, and one on each property.
Are they building them at the same time?
I, I believe they, they intend to. They actually know each other, so I believe they intend to.
Did you not just say something about building them at the same time?
Oh, if, it, well, th, they're probably going to apply for a separate building permit for each lot, so they, they won't be back for land development. Even if they wanna build the houses at the same time, as long as they're on separate lots and they're not building a, a development, as it were, then they don't have to come back in for land development.
And just to provide clarity based on the back and forth, uh, the buyers are separate, but the, the builder who they're dealing with would be the same. So that, that was the confusion there. Thank you.
Mr. Sander, what would be the, uh, motion?
Well, the, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicable motion, uh, if the board is of a mind, would be as follows. It would be a motion to approve the revised minor subdivision plan for Matthew V. Walsh, uh, at the southwest corner of Stoopville Road and Linton Hill Road, um, uh, consisting of the subdivision of a six point three-one acre parcel into two lots of three point one-four gross acres and three point one-seven gross acres. A Lot One contains an existing dwelling and shed. Lot Two has nothing constructed on it. Neither lot is currently planned for improvements. Approval is conditioned on the applicant's compliance with the following conditions. One, the applicant must satisfy all conditions set forth in the following review letters. A, CKS Engineers Review Letter dated May thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. B, RVE's Engineers Review Letter dated May thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. C, RVE Engineers Traffic Review Letter dated May thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. D, Bucks County Planning Commission's Review Letter of March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. And E, Newtown Fire Rescue Review Letter dated November twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two. Secondly, the applicant shall provide will, uh, current will-serv letters from the Newtown Bucks County Joint Municipal Authority as to wastewater service and the appropriate water service provider as to clean water service to the two lots. In addition, the applicant must secure confirmation from the Department of Environmental Protection of any necessary preconditions for securing the wastewater service from the local provider. Three, if the applicant intends to demolish the residential building on the property, it must submit a plan to the Joint Historic Commission to determine the historic nature of the structure and whether it should be considered for preservation. Four, any fees or costs due from the applicant to Newtown Township must be paid in full prior to the signing of final plans, and they're being recorded. And finally, the board grants waivers from the applicable sections of the subdivision and land development ordinance that require the installation of sidewalks and curbs.
Okay, that's the motion. Would someone like to make that motion? Thank you, Mr. Calabro. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Have a motion and a second. Uh, have any public, any, any other comments from the board? I guess we should throw it open to the public as well. Yes, come to the microphone.
Uh, good evening. Valerie Mahalik, um, from Newtown Walk. Um, I just have a question. I used to live in Lower Makefield, and when Scammles Corner was being looked at to be developed, they had the dilapidated historical structure, uh, the Scammles Home. And Lower Makefield went through different builders throughout that process, but they kept the original historical structure there and then built the homes around that. Um, and then I'm gonna also go to Wegmans. When they decided to build where the Wegmans is in Lower Makefield, they also kept the historical structure there. So why are we not looking at the, I just looked up the home. It was built in sixteen eighty-three. Why are we not looking to preserve the home, do something similar to Scammles Corner where the structure is, um, I mean, if you ever saw the Scammles House, the before and after, I mean, it's beautiful now, um, instead of taking down such a part of our history? Just a thought.
Thank you.
Can I make a comment? Uh, I'm...
Let's, uh, Mr. Cooper. Then we'll come back to board. Mr. Cooper?
Hello again, Bradley Cooper, Newtown Grant resident. And, um, I don't understand why every corner of Newtown, every inch of Newtown has to be built by some home, business, uh, some property. Just go to over the bridge to Lambertville or, uh, Hamilton. They got wide-open spaces. They got very many parks that are beautiful that you could go... got very many parks that are beautiful that you could go to Goat, Goat Hill Park, you could see the nice water that's going down the Delaware River, you could watch fireworks the few times that, you know, Doylestown or New Hope or any of those places shoot off fireworks, you could see it from there, sometimes very far in the distance, it's very nice. Why do we have to develop every corner of Newtown? Why are we allowing this to happen? We're the, we're, you know, we're the suburbs, we're supposed to have open land, have nice trees and parks, and we're supposed to have nice open greenaway to see, not every corner be a, be a house with 16 cars in their driveways and then have no streets able or have the capacity to be able to handle them. That's why some of the developments were being forced to have put on major streets because the side streets can't handle them. I don't think that this is right, that we're taking every corner of every part of Newtown and turning it into a house. I think we need to start doing something to preserve Newtown, may it be historic buildings or not, just preserve Newtown so it doesn't look like we're living in Philadelphia. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Ms. Mahalik asked a interesting question, and I'm kind of confused on why there's no land development. We, we don't know anything about what is the future here in terms of the impervious surfaces and driveways in and out and trees being removed and so on.
That, that's correct, but the MPC only requires land development for two or more residential dwellings.
I understand that, but we had somebody here from DeLuca, for example, that wanted to build more housing on, on, you know?
That wasn't land development, that was, that was not land development.
Well, it was something we voted on, and here, we're going to have some development that we will have no say in.
You authorized the opposition of a request for a variance to have an undersized lot. I don't believe that either lot here is less than three acres. That's the difference between this application and the DeLuca construction.
All right, well, I'm going to have to vote no because I don't understand that.
What is there not to understand, Mr. Mack? I want to, I want to try to make it clear for you.
I don't understand how we do not have any say in a future development in a conservation management, no matter what. I mean, when-
Because they're entitled to develop a single family home on three lots, three acres.
You're asking me to explain, let me finish. When the Toll Brothers came to do a development in the conservation management, they had, we had to approve that, and we talked about impervious surface, land set aside for agriculture, stuff like that. And in this case, you're saying we have no opportunity to do anything like that?
Because the lots are complying, they are three acres or more. Neither Toll nor DeLuca had lots that were three acres.
I, I don't get it.
Okay.
I'd all, I'd also note, I think with the impervious surface table, there's a requirement for 21 and a half percent to be the cap, any, any development of a single family home on a three acre lot is going to be certainly compliant with the underlying zoning, and I will also say that Mr. Sanders had a condition regarding any, and this, this could address the public comment as well, any proposed demolition of the existing structure would be submitted to the Joint Historic Board for Review, and, and that's fine as a condition. So in a scenario where that's declined to be permitted, then it would just be the construction of the one single family new home. So I think that addresses, or at least would be my response to the concern that's raised about oversight on the township's end.
Well, thanks for that clarification, thank you.
I was going to ask you too, if you had any other statement about that, so.
Thank you.
All right, seeing another discussion, I'll call the question, all those in favor of approving the minor Walsh minor subdivision on 385 Stoopville Road, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries four one.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. McGinnis. I have been asked by the board to give us a five minute recess, and we'll be back in five minutes. Call us back to order, and I believe our next order of business turns over to our engineer about the Arley grant.
Yep, thank you. So our item tonight is the Arley Funding Program Resolution, this is the Automated Red Light Enforcement Grant, this is for traffic signal and various traffic improvements. So township is applying for funding for the Newtown Yardly Road and Tara Boulevard, RRFB as well as the Sycamore Street and Silo Drive RRFB projects. So, you know, we're in the process of preparing that grant application now, this resolution authorizes submission of that grant.
Motion approved. Have a motion, do we, have a second?
Second.
Yes, have a motion and a second, do we have any discussion from the board?
Yeah, can you explain, I just had a question about the timing of this, can you go through that?
So the timing for the grant, so the grant is due at the end of June, so we would obviously approve this resolution and then prepare that application for the end of June. They give us a general timeline of when they anticipate giving funding, hopefully by the end of this year, grant awards would be announced. Another aspect of this approval was we had submitted a scoping document to PennDOT, which is sort of like a preliminary application where they give us feedback on the application. We got favorable feedback from them for this, so that happened last week, so.
So, very good, but Ken, I noticed in the 2023 budget, there was $250,000 allocated from ARPA funds for, for example, Sycamore Street improvement, which I assume has to do with that intersection.
Yep.
Can we start in, any of these projects before we know that we have a grant?
The project could be started with this grant, particularly the fund, any funding that's expended by the municipality, whether it's for design or construction, cannot be reimbursed through the grant. So timing wise, you know, this may cover construction costs for both of those, so the timing may work out by the time that they would announce an award, if the township were to receive funding, that it could cover the construction of these improvements.
All right, so it's, it's kind of a wash in the, in the end, nothing will happen until after January, basically.
You could obviously proceed, but just knowing that it wouldn't get reimbursed through this program per se, yep.
All right. Is there a period of time from the design phase to the construction phase?
There will be, yep, so the design, we're working on that preliminary design now, we will be in a position shortly to submit to PennDOT with the, with the design plans. Once we get that approval from PennDOT, which could take a month or two on their end, we then have to go out to bid for these projects, so that usually takes a month or two as well.
So I'm, I'm just reacting to your, things line up so that it would be kind of the end of the year when we know about the grant and have the pre-construction work done and, okay. Okay, very good. Any other comments or questions from the board? Any from the public? Please come forward and give us your name and-
Yes, good evening, Charles Foyer.
Turn, turn on the mic, there you go.
Good evening, Charles Foyer, Newtown Walk, and part of the group that has supported and assisted the township in, in getting this project moving. At this point, we're, like Mr. Mack started to ask, I think, trying to understand the delay at this point, and I'll start with the plan itself. It's a fairly common type of roadway situation with a pedestrian crosswalk. I would think that a plan similar to this or almost exactly to this would have been submitted prior in many occasions for the signals that we're putting over this roadway. We're concerned with the continued safety, we had a three car accident there this week, right? We had a three car accident at this particular intersection. So we as concerned citizens for, on behalf of the township as well as our own community and the Newtown Trail are trying to understand, we believed that the funding for this from ARPA had been approved by the township with the initial approval of this plan? And now, is the township applying for ARLE funds as a secondary thought? Or would we have been waiting for the ARLE funds which haven't even been applied, the grant hasn't even been applied for? I thought that grant had to be applied for by April of this year, but now we're hearing June. So I guess my question at this point is, was, were the funds available for this project at all yet, or we've been waiting for ARLE funds?
Do you want me to, I can comment on that?
Sure.
Micah, you might have more information on the exact allocation of the funding, I know there's funding set aside, this, this grant is containing two intersections, so that's why that cost is a little bit higher than what was previously discussed as allocated.
There's nothing in the budget currently, in the 2023 budget for this project. We're seeking funds to be able to do this project at this time.
Wait a minute, there's a, and I forget what page, I can tell you, I've seen it-
Sycamore Street.
That is for Sycamore Street.
What is Sycamore Street, what is, what's that project?
Sycamore and Silo.
Excuse me?
Sycamore and Silo Drive.
Oh, okay, that's one of these-
Yes.
Intersections, okay.
Sycamore Street construction was $250,000.
Correct, yep.
And, and, I mean, we could change that, but it would have to be through resolution of the board.
So I guess the answer to my question was, there's been no funding allocated in 2023 for the Newtown Yardly project. Okay.
Correct.
Is the, I guess as concerned citizens, is there any way that funding from the ARPA, which the last allocation pie chart that was distributed showed a million dollars is unallocated, and I think that was as of March of this year?
I don't, don't know which pie chart you're looking at.
The ARPA pie chart.
I created a pie chart based on the now, what I knew at that time, it may have changed since then in terms of the amount of money that is still unallocated, where it should be, I believe, around 800,000 at least.
Correct, that's what we were saying.
Yeah, okay. Thanks very much.
Well, we, we definitely want to work with you, and we're going to continue with that, as, as it stands at this point, Sycamore and Silo has been on the docket for about a year and a half. You're on the docket, you've been, we've been working with you for about three quarters of a year?
A year. June, June is when we started our advocacy last year.
I think you may have voted on it in Oct-, September, October.
Right, but we started emailing you.
Right.
Can I just say?
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Valerie Mahalik, Newtown Walk, again, we appreciate all that you're doing. We started physically coming to the meetings last September, but started emailing last June when we had children almost hit in the pedestrian mid-block crosswalk, which is very unusual to the township, and the father got hit moving his children out of the way. What, what we're confused about, and I, and I know John was speaking to this, was that when we were here last year, the board unanimously voted for the ARPA funds, which it was our understanding, Charlie, correct me if I'm wrong, that part of that funding was going for the cost of the traffic light, and it was also our understanding that the cost of the traffic light, correct me if I'm wrong, was no more than 200,000 for the RRFB. So now we're being told that there was no funding allocated at all in 2023 for this RRFB signal, which comes as, as a surprise to the 30 people that I've been working with throughout the area where we live, because it was our understanding that there was money allocated, not of course in 2022, but for 2023, when we came to one board meeting after another. So this is concerning to us. As you know, you got a very emotional email from one of our neighbors, Sue Coleman, who witnessed someone nearly getting struck in the mid-block pedestrian crosswalk, and John and Dennis, you both came and met with us there and saw how extremely dangerous it is. So although we had one win with lowering the speed limit to 25 miles per hour, unfortunately, a lot of people are not following it. We do have a sign there now that monitors people's speed limit, I do think that is helping, but the problem is, as Charlie stated at one of our meetings, when you're going 35 miles per hour because of the line of sight issue, when the cars reach the crosswalk, they can't stop when people are in there. So that, that situation never goes away, and I don't understand what the car accident was the other day with the three vehicles, but it was where the crosswalk is, but I don't know what the outcome of that was. So to hear that now the project is not going to even be started till possibly January of 2024 is very concerning to us. I don't know what more we can do to expedite this. I know with Silo, you know, a person was killed there, but that is not a mid-block crosswalk, and it is not the same issue that we have with line of sight and all the issues that we know, the sun glare and, you know, where the supervisors came and actually witnessed all that we've been telling you. So my question is, what can we do to expedite this? Is there anything? Because when we were looking at the RL, ARLE funding, like Charlie was saying, what we were reading, the submission had to be the end of April, so it's now the end of June? When we were looking on PennDOT's website for application?
The funding is, the application's due at the end of June, there was a pre-scoping application that was due in the beginning, don't quote me on the date, it was maybe the beginning of May, so that-
Okay.
That application did go in, that, that pre-application, yep.
Right, so now you, I, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, we're talking two months for the possible, actually several months for approval, and then the other question is, when the design is completed, it will go before the supervisors so people in our community can at least see the design before it is submitted to PennDOT, is that something that will happen? I know we've been going back and forth on emails about that.
Can I address one aspect of what you're talking about? I don't believe that we should allocate funds based on who came to us first. I think we should allocate funds based upon the perceived danger.
Mm-hmm.
I know we've made some improvements at the Silo Drive and North Sycamore, and I haven't heard of any accidents at that intersection, and whereas you are talking about current accidents near Tara Drive, so I would suggest that instead of the $250,000 being set aside for Silo Drive and Sycamore Street, that it be used in the case of, of this overhead light for Tara Drive. That would make it, I think, more responsive to current situation.
Yes.
And it doesn't matter to me who came first before the board to ask for this, you know, and then we can have the money, hopefully from this fund, to go back to North Sycamore Street. That's what I would recommend, if the board is in mind, to reallocate that $250,000.
Thank you, I, I think that is an excellent point, I think, as you said, if you were to look at in the last year, where are the issues happening? It continues to be where we are, again, because of the mid-block crosswalk and the line of sight and the sun glare and the speed limit issues. I, I, I'm just going to tell you, it's going to be a matter of time until someone's going to be hurt there. As I've said to you, I live at the, like, towards the front of the community, and we, you know, continue to hear cars- continue to hear cars screeching. And again, I will say it's not because people don't want to stop and are ignoring the pedestrians. It's because by the time they get to the mid-block crosswalk, they can't stop. The other thing is, I don't know how we let people know. I know Pennsylvania state law is that in order for cars to stop, the pedestrian has to go into the crosswalk. When you leave the Newtown Walk community and you step into the crosswalk, and many of us have observed this, particularly children on bicycles, they have to put the bikes into the turning lane that is going into our community. So pedestrians are very hesitant. Ellen, you're probably you probably can understand, since I know you live over there, what I'm talking about. But because we have the big turning lane going into Newtown Walk, the crosswalk to go into the crosswalk, the children who are on bikes are now in the turning lane. So no one really wants to go and do that. So I don't know. I mean, technically, then, according to Pennsylvania law, the cars don't have to stop. Did you want to say something?
Linda Rowley, Newtown Walk. This morning, I was waiting to cross back into Tara Boulevard, and a car stopped to let me go. I was barely halfway across, and he gunned it and took off before I was even out of the crosswalk. The other thing is, I put my G my cruise control on, so I go 25 miles an hour when I'm coming from town. As soon as I turn into that turning lane, they floor it and pass me. Nobody is going 25 unless the cop is sitting there.
Thank you all. The what we have before us is the approval of the resolution for the Arley Grant. I would be happy to have a conversation, to get some figures from the administration as to how much of the Sycamore improve street construction funds are still available, because I know we've spent some on LED lighting. And to upgrade the upgrade that intersection, we've spent some money already. It would be something I could bring back to the board when we have I'll have a chance to look at it, and we can make a decision as as to what to do with that. I mean, that would be my proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that's a reasonable approach. Thank you.
Okay. I do want to say that every day I cross the I cross right there to take my dog over to the cemetery. And probably eight times out of 10, I'm confronted with motorists that absolutely aren't paying attention, don't care about the speed limit. They don't care about anything. They just want to get to their destination. So, yeah, I have to agree. It's just the most dangerous place there is to cross the street. So whatever we can do to expedite that, I would be all in favor for.
And they don't like me because I go 25. But, okay, shall we call the question? All those in favor of approving the Arley Grant application process, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, nothing.
That concludes the agenda items. I'm happy to answer any questions that the board has.
Any questions for our engineer this evening?
Yes. How's the trail doing? The Lower Dollington Road?
I'm sure you can see it's under construction. They resumed, and they're they're progressing pretty well, I think.
So what they did was put the pipes underground for the water to run off into the proper receptacles.
Yep. So what you're seeing, they installed the stormwater elements of the site. So they did inlets, underground infiltration trenches. That was the main thing. And then they've they've covered that up, so they'll probably come back through that area, and you'll start seeing some trail soon.
Okay. Thank you.
And I saw that the road program, you had a pre-construction meeting?
Yeah, we had that last week. We've made our submission to PennDOT for the liquid fuels, you know, final approval. So that should be coming shortly, and then the contractor will be ready to get started.
Great. That's something new pavement.
Yep.
We got last way last year on High Street. It looks great. Okay. Let me get my agenda back here. Solicitors' report. Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item on our report is the consideration by the board of a settlement agreement that would settle all ongoing litigation between the township and Provco. Provco is the property owner of the property on which a Wawa convenience store and gas station use is proposed. The agreement has been before the board for review, and if the board is of a mind, it would be a motion to approve the settlement agreement.
We have a motion. We have a second. I'll second it. We have a motion and a second. Do we have some questions from the board? Questions or comments? Miss? Miss?
I certainly have comments. About 2019, years before I was a supervisor, this board voted to allow this Wawa in Newtown. Around that same time, before I was a supervisor, the zoning board gave a special exemption to the Wawa in order to facilitate that project to go forward. I would like to be clear, I would have never voted for a Wawa to come to Newtown. It it still turns my blood cold to even think about it. But because of the chain of of events that I just mentioned, a Wawa is coming to Newtown. A vote against a settlement at this time will not stop this Wawa from coming here. They already own the land, and as such, they are entitled to build, because that is the law. Ending this litigation now, we can impose limits on what they build as far as pumps and signage are concerned. If they win in court, which all of the lawyers indicate that they would, we would have no control whatsoever. So I'm voting to stop the bleeding of Newtown dollars. Again, we are not voting for whether a Wawa is coming to Newtown. That was voted on years ago, and we simply, at this time, we have to accept that. And we have to accept that the best way that we can, by getting the most concessions that we can. And believe me when I say, there's no amount of solar panels or electric charging stations that are good enough to make me vote for this in the first place. But now, that being said, we are at a different point. And as I said, I'm not voting for the Wawa. I'm voting for an end to this litigation, which is seemingly endless. Trying to make a the best of a bad situation. That's all I have to say about it. Thank you.
I mean, we got a little ahead of ourselves. Mr. Sanders, are there some highlights that you would like? It was my fault.
Well, again, and I think actually Supervisor Snyder touched on some of them. The the original plan that was filed by Provco for the Wawa sought a myriad of signage, both at the bypass with large illuminated electronic message center signs with the gas prices on them. It sought numerous signs on the building and at the entrance to the actual Wawa itself up on Lower Silver Lake Road. And it included signage on the proposed canopy over the gas pumps. It included eight gas pumps. It included no electric vehicle charging stations, and it included no solar panels. With the litigation and the negotiation of this agreement, the township has asked and and Provco has agreed to reduce the number of gas pumps to a maximum of six. They have agreed to what is comparatively extremely limited signage for this Wawa, which was something that many residents had spoken about, that they didn't want, frankly, the bypass to become a Route 1 in Langhorne or a street road in Wormminster. The the limit of one relatively small sign that just says the word "Wawa" on it without any gas prices, without any corporate logo down at the bypass is a concession that the township obtained from Provco. In addition, this majority of the board felt that it was important to promote the use of solar energy, and Provco pushed back on that. They said that they couldn't do it in Pennsylvania because there's no reimbursement program. They said that they would not do it in Pennsylvania, frankly. And the board insisted on it and finally obtained a plan from Provco and a commitment to install prior to opening the Wawa, a the solar panels on the side of their canopy that faces the sun that's able to generate solar electricity from solar panel from solar power. In addition, there was some concern about the residents on the Crossing Community Church property, and the board asked Provco to provide a community liaison to handle any complaints concerning the Wawa from the residents of that specific residence, which is within 750 feet of the Wawa itself. Wawa also had not originally proposed electric vehicle charging stations. Again, another idea that is gaining traction nationwide, that is becoming of much greater environmental significance and which a majority of this board insisted on and obtained as part of this settlement. So we've got six pumps instead of eight. We've got significantly reduced signage. We have solar panels. We have electric vehicle charging stations. We have a community liaison, and I'm sure members of the board will maybe add to that if I have left anything of significance out. In addition, as Ms. Snyder mentioned, the ongoing litigation about which I have opined that the township is in less than favorable legal position to emerge victorious, will be all completely settled, and the township will stop spending money on both legal fees and expert witnesses to attempt to espouse its legal positions. So that, I think, is an outline of what we have here. I will echo Ms. Snyder's sentiment that the fact that a Wawa will be at this property is a foregone conclusion. It will happen. The question becomes, what type of Wawa does the township wish to see? Does it wish to see one with large internally illuminated electronic signs with gas prices and other signage on the bypass and on the building? Or does it wish to have something a lot less demonstrative than than that, that would also contain less gas pumps and provide for several important environmental aspects that are important to a majority of the board? So those are my summation comments on the settlement agreement, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. I have some comments. Would you like to go first, Mr. Snyder?
I may.
You may go.
Well, it's good to know that our attorney doesn't think he can win the case, and that's a message that's going to be sent to all developers and has already been sent. And this is what I'm calling the Newtown zoning, the beginning of the Newtown zoning Armageddon, in which other developers are going to come and claim that our ordinances are unconstitutional. And already, we have a validity challenge from the Kushner Real Estate Group to build apartment buildings, apartment building with 245 units down the road on Lower Silver Lake Road from the Wawa. And on June 9th, it was just announced that there's going to be a the corners of Newtown at North Sycamore Street and Newtown Yardley Road, I believe. They also intend to file a a what you call a validity challenge. So there's a slippery slope happening here. And I'm certain that the church across the street from the proposed Wawa will be glad to offer a piece of its land to a developer, because when Wawa first came here, Mr. Van Louveney said the church said a prayer and wished Mr. Van Louveney success. No wonder, because they got this prime real estate right on the bypass that I'm sure they're going to sell to somebody. And by the way, you might have heard that the Newtown Sewer Authority wants to put in a sewage treatment plant down the road on Lower Silver Lake Road. So this is what I think is is the future for Newtown, and it's really unfortunate.
Well, let me respond to you first. Some of some of what you said was pure speculation, and some of it is some issues that we'll be fighting together. I I'm a pragmatist in this case especially. There's going to be a Wawa there. The zoning hearing board allowed for this use. So they're coming, and it's a matter of if we get some of the things that we want or they get it all their way. The solicitor gave a nice rundown of some of the some of the negotiations. So the solar panels are important to me. The six gas pumps, they they wanted eight, and they could if they got their way, they might have done 12. Six gas pumps equal to six E V charging stations. So there's a comparison there. Six six pumps, which is fewer than they wanted.
There are 12 pumps, six stations. Two pumps each.
Okay. Okay. And I think the E V charging stations are double-sided, too. Signage at our preference. And the signing, the monument sign actually mirrors the sign for the community community church. It's the same kind of sign. The E 30 will still be intact. The E 30 use will still be intact for future applications. If if Wawa would have litigated that, they would have broken apart the E 30. They would have broken that ordinance. Now we have it for future projects. It's still in place, because all the legal challenges are ending. All the litigation is settled. Speaking of settling the litigation, there'll be a as as Member Snyder said, the 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 loss of money, the bleeding will will be stopped and all the litigation. So we'll save that money for litigation. We also added the community liaison, which would be a person who would go between Wawa and the the residents who live closer than 750 feet. So that would be someone who could also they could also spearhead any any community events that Wawa. that Wawa wanted to be sponsors for. And again, this settlement agreement beats the alternative of losing and having to accept a Wawa design without our input. So, that's why I am in favor of this settlement agreement. Any other comments from the board?
Yes, I have a comment.
Yes.
I also agree this fight should have been fought three years ago, which I did at the time fight. I think we should have fought it then and not approved the E30 use and took it to court and fought it until possible. And you can argue it wasn't possible. I thought it was worth the effort. And the description that we're talking about of the settlement agreement, I don't consider the applicant applying mostly to our sign ordinance as a victory. We should be patting ourselves on the back of it. They, that sign ordinance already exists, it was already there. They're not getting any favors out of us from it. There's, actually, they are probably getting favors out of it because it can be visible from the bypass. But I don't consider that a victory. I would, I understand the nature of the litigation. It's hard to do this in public. We have to have discussions off-camera. But I would have liked the public to have seen this settlement before we were voting on it tonight, rather than just hearing us up here trying to explain what the settlement entails. And then lastly, I do, I think there's going to be problems there with people crossing the bypass, especially kids. I think it's dangerous and probably a matter of time if something horrible happens there. If you think people will speed on Newtown Yardley Road, we all drive on the bypass. We know what goes on the bypass. And that's four lanes at a major intersection where some kid's going to try and cross at some point or more than once. And I think that's a horrible thing to consider. And those are the reasons why I'm going to vote no for this. I don't think it's to surprise anybody up here. But I just wanted to reiterate why, for the record. I really didn't want to see a gas station put on the bypass in Newtown, which is overlying long-term driver to my vote on this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members? Open it up to the public. Please don't forget, I would like folks from Newtown to go first. And so, if you're a Newtown resident, we'd ask that you have a chance to go first.
Very good. I'm Terry Christensen. I live on 67 Kirkwood Drive in Newtown. I also sit on the Township Planning Commission. I understand that this deal is pretty well done. I want to echo Mr. Davis's comments, and I made similar comments a couple of weeks ago. This board has rightly been concerned about pedestrian safety. And you have taken what I believe to be prudent and necessary actions to guarantee what you can at pedestrian safety, particularly on Sycamore Street. There's talk about improving pedestrian safety in the area of Newtown Walk. My experience is that Wawas are an attraction to young people. And those young people, most of them live on the opposite side of the bypass in Wawa. And in the discussion of the settlement, I didn't hear anything about pedestrian safety or bicycle safety being enhanced. And the drawings I saw last did not include much in the way of providing for that. And that's a concern because it's only a matter of time. I hope I'm wrong about this, but everything in my experience tells me it's only a matter of time until somebody gets killed there. Some young people get killed. At George School, I coach at George School, they put a bright flashing light, a rapidly flashing light across 413. They asked their students to carry a flag when they were crossing over to Summit Square. And they were, and you had three students, this was two and a half years ago, had three students doing exactly that. And a driver came up 413 and hit those three girls. One of them had relatively minor injuries. One was in the hospital for a couple of weeks. One of them was in, chopped for four months, maybe five. This is, that's a worse intersection than that. The proposed place for the Wawa is a worse intersection than that. I just don't think we've done enough to protect pedestrian safety. And I don't want to sound overly dramatic, but the fact of the matter is, we kill a kid there that blood's on all our hands.
Bradley Cooper, Newtown grant resident since 1999. And just want to reiterate a couple of things to people that haven't been to all these meetings that Wawa had with us, that might be watching on YouTube or the television. When I got interested in this because of COVID, I had nothing to do because everything was shut down because of our governor. And I heard Wawa talking on their zoning hearing about signs and pumps. And when they were talking about the signs, how it's backlit, how the sign moves with, you know, inside, you hit a button and it moves in the back or whatever. According to our zoning laws, you can't have a sign that moves by a motor. Well, it has a motor in it, so it's, yeah. So, it doesn't meet our zoning laws. But because our zoning laws are 40, 50 years old, they can go around them and find a way around them because we refuse to do anything about our zoning laws. Then they went to the planning commission, and the planning commission said that they're going to make a recommendation to deny it because they didn't feel it was applicable. And for whatever reason, they didn't approve it or whatever, after they talked and listened to them speak. The lady, one of the lawyers for Wawa, started screaming at them, saying, "You can't deny us because we're big bad Wawa, because we got all the rights to be here," or whatever. Then they came to the supervisors and gave you guys harassment when you were asking them simple questions. Then they went back to the zoning board because they didn't like the decision that they made. And now, you're telling them, "Oh, because we want to take the easy way out, we're not going to fight to try to save Wawa, the history of Wawa, the way Wawa is supposed to be." All the businesses that have been struggling because of COVID, because of our governor shutting them down and not allowing them to work, all the environmental issues that it's coming there, 50 feet of piping that could burst at any second, trying to hope that they put trees and plants that are native to the area, not some tree from Tennessee or Oklahoma, making sure that the people that live in that area don't get too inconvenienced by light pollution or traffic or have an issue where they get something happening to their buildings or their livelihood, which gets pushed to the side because Wawa says they're only renters from the church that's right there. Everything that's going on, you're basically saying you're giving up. It's, "Oh, this is over. It's not worth fighting for," or whatever. I mean, there's been litigations where people, and I understand you're going to say it's completely different or whatever, but we had people, you know, O.J. Simpson back in the day. Everyone knew in the world that he was convicted. He murdered somebody. But because Johnny Cochran was such a good lawyer, he found a way to say, "Oh, he wasn't the person that was convicted, and he got off scot-free." So, we're letting this happen or whatever. And the gentleman who's fighting for them is going to be also fighting for all these other big businesses to come right into Newtown. And he sees a great opening to be able to go right in there and say, "Oh, well, I won on this, so I know how to win on this and how to win on this." And then it's just going to be a domino effect of 1,500 buildings, figuratively speaking, going right down Newtown by John Louvenay, winning this case and that case and that case, or whatever. There's so many little nuances that we didn't even get ironed out. There's so many issues and problems that we're just throwing on the wind and saying, "Oh, let's just see what happens. Let's just let it go, and we'll worry about it when that time comes." You had to fight and scream and yell and pull and claw to get this, you know, this or that changed or have Wawa do this to make them happy or whatever, when they're never going to be happy until they get what they want. And John Louvenay gets whatever else somebody else comes to him wants because he can find some way around our outdated zoning laws. And by approving this, you're telling all the Newtown businesses that have been here for 30 and 40 years that we're not going to support you the way that we're supporting Wawa. And we're going to give them all of the rights and benefits. We're going to kind of let them go in certain aspects and not fight for them. And those businesses, if they go out of business, it'll be because of you guys.
Good evening. My name is Tom Crawford. I own a property at 10 Lower Silver Lake Road. I just want to emphasize that I and many others agree with the sentiment of Supervisor Mack. And with all due respect, I'm just hearing a lot of excuses, and that's what they are, excuses. If you settle with Wawa, in the end, Wawa gets its way. And over time, you will get more pumps. You won't get six, you'll get more, okay? You'll get more signs. Gradually, they'll just keep coming back, and they'll just come and at you over and over and over again. This board previously voted to deny Wawa's application. Sometimes you just have the guts to stick with your prior decisions. And sometimes you have to fight the fight, and you have to win the fight. And you can't be afraid of the fight. And if you can't win the fight, then maybe you better look for some other soldiers who can win that fight for you if your soldiers are just going to cave. And watching the whole evolution of this thing, you've had a bunch of soldiers who sometimes I wonder whether they're on the side of Newtown Township because they seem to be very cozy with the developers or just very weak, okay, improperly and zealously representing the township's interest. And in the end, this is what you're going to get. You are going to get the crime which is associated with Wawa. You are going to get the safety factors. You are going to get the traffic. Newtown Township is going to get all of the negatives. And with all due respect, I'm not opposed to Wawa. Wawa may be appropriate in many, many places. And I think the example was on Route One and some other places, maybe other places in the township, but not as your entranceway to Newtown Township. That's what Newtown Township is actually, it's special, okay? People love Newtown Township. And what you're doing is you're taking the first step to turn Newtown Township into the Route One corridor or another corridor. I assume that we will be back here in a short period of time, and maybe it won't be the apartments next door. Maybe we can put McDonald's next door, and we can put Burger King, and let's just keep on going. That is what you are setting in motion, okay? Basically, the degradation of Newtown, which has been special for so, so many years. Sometimes you just have to have the guts, okay, to just fight the fight. Whatever happens, happens, but fight the fight. And that's what you're elected to do. That's what the residents of Newtown Township want you to do. And even right now, okay? And you maybe have about five minutes to make the vote, just find the fortitude, okay, to say, "You know something? I don't care." Do one of two things. Either vote against the settlement or defer the settlement, and don't make your decision, don't make your decision tonight. But really, what I hear some of the members of this board doing are giving up. And I'm going to tell you, the residents of Newtown are watching, okay? And they will remember. And I will suggest to you, okay? If you're going to give up, then you should be voted out of office, okay? I would just respectfully to either defer your decision, think about your decision. And I'm going to tell you, some of these things, I'm not sure that they really have been widely circulated. I'm just finding out about, you know, this. I don't think that the residents of Newtown really are fully aware. And I think maybe one of your primary impairment duties is to, if this is the way you're going to go, at a minimum, you should make sure that it's well advertised and that it's well publicized with the Newtown Township so you can get the appropriate feedback as to how the residents of Newtown, you know, Township feel. And I can tell you, I know this, I speak for myself, but I have a lot of contacts. I'm not just speaking for myself, I'm speaking for a group also. There's a large number of people who feel the same as I feel. And again, I think it was best said by Supervisor Mack. And I just think that you have to have the consistency, the fortitude, okay, and the guts to make the right decision, okay? Wawa's not the right decision. And you know something? You know it. You all know it because you started your things with, "We don't want Wawa. We just think that we have no other chances. I don't want Wawa. I never wanted Wawa. I don't know how we got here." That's where your heart's at. Follow your heart and tell your lawyers, okay? Do what you need to do to fight Wawa and defeat Wawa. And you know something? If Wawa prevails, they can prevail. Five or 10 years from now, when the Supreme Court comes down and says, "Oh, Wawa was right all along," okay? And you know something? Let's see if Wawa has the stomach for it also. But the residents of Newtown, you know? They're going to get their Wawa. Let them go to the Supreme Court and get it, you know, five, 10 years from now. But I'm just employing you to reconsider your decisions and do the right thing for the right reasons in the best interest of Newtown Township.
John DiApro, Newtown Grant, biggest and the best. The right thing? Anyway, wow. This 14-year-old story that's finally going to go away? A lot of people don't know it, but, you know, talks for 14 years, might be off a few years, give or take, way back when he talked about going where Newtown Rental was. But one of the supervisors lived right there. It would have been at their back window. And that didn't happen. And whether they went and found a spot for him or whatever, that supervisor long gone, got an inheritance and moved to Maine or whatever. Good. I mean, I was glad to see her leave. You know, he talked about, "Stop the bleeding." You guys are the ones that sent the solicitor to this thing. You should have, I heard a lot of conjecture about, "This might be built here, and that might be built here now." And Route One, that's the biggest farce, right? You can never make the bypass look like Route One or Street Road. There's too many buildings there. You're going to knock down all them residential houses and stuff? Never happened. That, I laugh all the time when I hear that, "Make the bypass look like Route One," okay? And, you know, "Stop the bleeding," you know? He said the solicitor's there. Zoning, zonings was bad. I attended some of the zoning meetings, and he talked about signs. Zoning on for signs is so ambiguous. The guy shot all kinds of holes in there. The other lawyer was there, not Dave. The other lawyer was there, and all he did was repeat stuff. You know, I don't know who was paying him, but, you know. You gotta, gotta look into that zoning and get it right. Get it right. It's, you know, like Brad said about a motor and sign. I mean, this is 2023, you know? They want them to go there with the signs and move the little plastic letters and put them up. And, I mean, it's crazy. 12 pumps, six stations. Well, you know, if you get backups like you do at Chick-fil-A, it's your guys' fault. You know? He says there's a lot of Newtown people don't want the Wawa. I know a lot of people that want the Wawa, and they wanted it for years. I don't know what, you know, hey, everybody's got their own little clique, their own little thing, but, I mean, you look at online, you got the Keyboard Warriors. They complain about everything, you know?
Anyone else?
No, no, I'm not debating. Just one, one, one comment. I just wanted to emphasize, I believe that the board has an obligation to disclose to the residents of Township the terms and conditions of the settlement before, okay, voting on it and making a bind decision to bind the township to it. And let me just tell you why it's a legal matter. I happen to be an attorney by trade, okay? And I've represented lots of landowners and lots of complex litigation. Sometimes, an attorney, what you like to do is things that you couldn't do outside litigation, you do in the context of the settlement of litigation. You say, "I couldn't really get this done. I couldn't do this. The board may not even be able to do this." But you know something? We just wrap it in the settlement of the civil action. We have a judge sign off on it.
We just wrap it in the settlement of a civil action, we have a judge sign off on it, and we do things that we're really not even allowed to do. That is why it's very, very important to disclose, okay, to the Township, the terms and conditions of the settlement before making a binding decision, okay, on behalf of the Township. Because, I'll just give you an example, you really don't have any right to say to Wawa under your Township, we want you to put solar panels on your roof. And yet, in the settlement, you say, we couldn't do anything as a board to make you put solar panels on your roof? Yet, when we're a settlement, I'll tell you what, let's make you put solar panels on the roof, and we can come up with an A, and a B, and a C, and D, and lots of conditions that we never could do as the board, but we'll just stick it in a settlement. But the same thing happens on the other end. And I know that Wawa has very sophisticated lawyers, and I know that they are very sharp, and they cut every angle, and I'm concerned about the terms and conditions of the settlements, and Wawa's attorneys putting things in there and putting them in there in such a way that they know that they could not get the board to do those things just in the vote from the board itself, that they couldn't add certain terms and conditions, yet they throw it in the context of the settlement agreement. So I would suggest to you, if you vote to bind, okay, the Township, okay, to a settlement agreement, and you haven't disclosed the terms and conditions, I just think that that is grossly unfair and entirely contradictory to your obligations, okay, to the residents of the Township. So I think that you have to do it step by step. I think you need to disclose terms and conditions. Here's the proposed settlement with Wawa, and subject that to, you know, to public review, and then I think you need to come back, okay, and make your vote. The other thing it gives me the ability to do is to look at it and say, you can't do this in your terms and conditions, you can't do that in your terms and conditions, but nobody knows what the terms and conditions are, other than very, very, you know, minor, you know, I mean, comments. I don't think that that's fair to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have a couple of emails to read, but anyone else?
Hi, I'm Peter Jagged from One Colonial Drive. I would not like to be in your position, it's a very difficult position, but based on what I'm hearing up here for this time, the bypass goes past where Wawa is going to be built. And if things continue what we're reading in the patch and all the other paperwork, you're going to have supposedly a hospital, would be where Stony Brook is, if it gets through Lower Makefield. We have Wegmans going up, we have the development down in that area, so every place is going to be developed. There's going to be traffic. I do agree with this gentleman, we should address it for kids, because up in Doylestown, that is one of the biggest things when Wawa was built up in Doylestown, you have all the kids going back and forth. Maybe that's something that could be addressed. Maybe there's a way around it. There is, though, at this present point in time, it's going to come, based on what you guys have already said here, there's a lot of development going on with businesses in the area, people are looking to go, and if Newtown wants to attract more businesses, they got to put places where people can go to have lunch, and take lunches, et cetera, and get cars, and get their car services. So this might be one way of looking at it. There's going to be development, if not here, further down the bypass as you get to go to 295. We're not living in a little bubble, just here in Newtown.
Thank you. I did, I think we did receive three emails, a couple of them are short. First one is, my name is Steve Sekay. I have lived in 263 Burgundy Lane in Newtown since 1985. One of the reasons I moved to Bucks County was because of the bucolic beauty of the Bucks County landscape. Over the years, I have seen its natural beauty eroded and dwindled by incessant overdevelopment. At some point, we have to stand firm in our ever-thinning green line. If, if I have a hankering for a cup of Wawa coffee, which is rare, because I brew my own coffee and much more cheaply at home, I can drive to a Wawa in Yardley or the Wawa in Richborough. I don't, I don't need yet another Wawa in Newtown. I haven't read this agreement, because I don't care about any agreement that furthers the idea of destroying any more of the acres of beautiful Bucks County natural land for a pointless and needless business enterprise. All I need my Newtown leaders to do is stop the building of yet another Wawa here in Newtown land. So vote against the agreement, and then work hard to prevent the building of a Wawa forever. I would prefer instead to see more trees, flowers, grass, squirrels, turtles, birds, rabbits, and deer in Newtown, and yet another beauty-plating fast food gas, gas station chain store. Thank you for listening. I've got two more. Number two. It's right there. Catherine, if I don't have it, you might have to read it. Okay, I got it. I wanted to thank, this is from Jed H. And let me see, Jed Halakbal, Six Emerald Lane, Newtown. I wanted to thank Supervisor for representing the residents of, over special interests, and I hope you will continue to represent the residents at the meeting tonight, and do not side with, side with special interests. I urge you to please reject Wawa settlement deal, I am concerned about the increase in traffic, crime, and environmental impact of the Wawa construction, as well as the insurmountable competition a Wawa would add to small businesses in the local Newtown economy. I hope that Provco, Wawa, will be asked about the crime at Wawa stores at the meeting tonight, as Wawa keeps comprehensive accounts of crime incidents at its stores. The proposed Newtown Wawa is located right next to a major interstate, which will offer an easy escape, escape route for criminals, especially in the late-night extended hours of operation of a business. According to Jennifer Homendy, the National Transportation Safety Board Chair, the tanker truck that caught fire and destroyed I-95 was carrying 8,500 gallons of gasoline to a local Wawa. I hope that Wawa will be asked about the frequency of fuel deliveries at tonight's meeting. And I hope that the increase in hazardous materials coming through the Township is brought to attention and discussed. In addition to traffic and crime, the increase in traffic and crime will have a direct impact on the residents of Newtown and its surrounding area. Please preserve the bypass to allow for the free movement of traffic around residential and commercial areas of Newtown, and make sure that they follow zoning laws. One more paragraph. Thank you for standing your ground as far as, thus far in David versus Goliath, or small-town government versus multi-billion-dollar corporation. Many of our, many of us residents support and appreciate those of you who are siding with the residents on this. I think to give up now would be a bad decision in the long term, even if it is tempting or safer or an easier route. I certainly hope that all this progress, that all of the progress against Wawa, Provco for the residents isn't erased due to a settlement including solar panels and a welcome Newtown sign. I hope all of this is, that all of this is more than, more than that. And there's one more. This one is short. I am in favor of Wawa, and provided, provided they follow the stipulations and requirements and as for by the Planning Commission, of which I am a part. And that was from Joel Robb. And that's the emails that came in during the, during the meeting this evening.
Can I make a motion to table?
You would need a second.
I'd second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion, motion to table, is there any discussion on a motion to table?
Yeah, my thought is, public transparency, give the public time to see the settlement agreement, rather than just what was read to them tonight.
I would not like to see that prolonged any further.
Any other comments on that? On the motion to table?
I do agree that the public has not really seen all the details. Every time we discuss this, that we were told we cannot disseminate this. And I tried my best to let people know what this settlement consists of, and if I disobeyed the law to give the public more information, then please arrest me, Mr. Xander, thanks.
Any other comments? Call the question. Those in favor of tabling this?
Not on, not on the motion to table.
All in favor of the motion to table say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion fails three to two. Two to three. Okay. Is there any motion to approve the settlement agreement with Wawa?
It's already over. Motion has been made and seconded, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, it's getting late. So call the question, those in favor of this settlement?
There's another public comment.
There's another public comment? Yes.
Yeah, yeah, if there's more public comment, then that, that should be, that should be
And please state your name and where you're from, and remember this about the Newtown Wawa.
Sure, my, my name is Pam Duffy, I've been here before to your meetings about Wawa. I live in Holland, my address is 125 Hope Road in Holland, PA. I'm here representing the neighbors in Holland. There's a huge group of us, 3,000 total, all together. I am so disillusioned by what I heard tonight, please do not give up. You guys were elected by the people of Newtown to represent the best interests of Newtown. Do you really want to go down in history as the group of supervisors who allowed Wawa to run you over, to bully you? Because that's what Wawa does. It will open the door, and I know you want me to keep it to Newtown, but I'm not going to talk about our fight, but Doyle, look at Doylestown, there's a Wawa at the beginning of Doylestown, and at the other end of it as you leave. And I've noticed the cute little small businesses, the small restaurants, the mom and pop are closing, one by one, in Doylestown. Mr. Fisher, in response to Mr. Mack's comment of the downfall of Newtown, it will be an Armageddon, with Wawa opening the door in terms of zoning, but at what point will Wawa be stopped? Ms. Snyder said, stop the bleeding and the money, and I get that. I'm a businessperson, I know this is money, this is dollars and cents, but God forbid, if somebody gets killed, and Wawa is a haven for teenagers, they're hanging out in Doylestown, they're hanging out in Richborough. A week ago, 11:20 on a Monday night, in Richborough, I was driving home from a late-night bowling league with my sons, and the town was closed down, it was totally dark, it was 11:20 PM, Monday night. Everything was dark, except Wawa was booming, and I, and with the smell of pot, kids sitting on tops of the cars, just had, you know, hassling customers, I sat there and watched them over the last couple of years. I, I mean, it's really sad, and if someone, God forbid, gets killed, Newtown, I'm sure, I know they sue, and they sue everybody, I'm sure Newtown will get sued. Somebody, I think Mr. Mack mentioned a sewage plant, possibly, on Silver Lake Road, you know, you said, Mr. Fisher, you said you're going to fight that, well, there's money there, too. Stop the bleeding. So you put your money to fight Wawa, or you put your money to fight the sewage plant that you're opening the door for everything? Wawa is the root cause of all mayhem, and most recently, that tanker. That tanker truck with the gasoline 5,800, which I think Mr. Hollerback alluded to in that comment that you read, Mr. Fisher, 5,800 gallons were in that tanker truck, that tanker truck was on route to Wawa. Wawa is the root cause. Don't do this to Newtown. Do not go down in history. Fight, you've got to fight. And now I'm going to reference my battle in Holland. We were nothing, nobody even knew about it. And we're winning, we're on the winning side, we went to court, we went to court on the zoning, and Judge Denise Bowman voted in our favor, and now we're going to the Commonwealth Court in Harrisburg. We're going to keep fighting, and you know who paid for that? The neighbors. I personally raised $5,000 overnight as a down payment to the lawyer. We are in for well over $25,000 so far in this battle. Sure, we might lose, but boy, it is heartwarming to me how these neighbors came together and raised this money overnight, practically. And we've been paying, and, you know, and I, I think you guys were great, because the way you stood up to Wawa. Please don't give up. I, I think you're transparent, and I thought you did an amazing job. You stand up here and you talk to each other. I don't see that in, honestly, in other Townships. And I think that's great, and I think you had the guts to stand up to Wawa. Please don't give up. Ms. Snyder, please, I know it wasn't your battle, I know that you would have made different decisions, and I get that, and I get what you're saying, and I know you want to stop the bleeding. But you're going to bleed in other ways, believe me. You are opening the doors, as Mr. Mack said, Armageddon. I mean, don't be the reason that Newtown goes down the tubes. Thank you.
All right. Call the question. All those, all those in favor of approving the settlement agreement with Wawa? Say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries three to two.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next item on our report is the ratification of agreements with Attorney Joe Bagley and Planner David Babbitt to represent the Township legally and as a professional planner in the KRE, Curative Amendment preceding. The law requires that the Township Solicitor sit with and advise the board during those hearings, and the Township has chosen to take a position to oppose that, that Curative Amendment. It must hire outside counsel. Mr. Bagley submitted a proposal, as did Mr. Babbitt, for planning services, and due to the time restrictions required to allow them to get started to, on preparing the case, the authorization was verbally given to execute those agreements. We now bring it before the Township, as has been the case in timing situations in the past, to allow the board to consider ratifying those two agreements. So I'd ask for a motion to approve the engagement agreements with Mr. Joe Bagley as counsel and Mr. David Babbitt as professional planner for the Township.
So we're going to do them both together?
Correct.
Okay. Any discussion from the board?
Is there a motion?
Yeah, we need a motion. So, motion in a second? I have a motion in a second. Thank you for reminding me. So all those in favor of them? Okay, yes, yes, please, yes.
This is step two in the slippery rope to Newtown's zoning Armageddon, because I was at the Planning Commission when KRE proposed this apartment complex, and they specifically said they were going to challenge our zoning, exactly the way that Wawa has done. Wawa has shown these developers the way to beat Newtown, and tonight, we just exhibited to every other developer that we will cave in. And I'm going to predict that we're going to cave in on this, and we're going to spend a lot of money on this challenge by hiring these outside experts, and so on and so forth, because it's required by law, and that's the only way that we spend money to try to defend ourselves. But when But when push comes to shove, I guarantee that the board here is gonna, okay, this apartment complex, unless the Newtown Sewer Authority takes over, that offers them a better deal, eminent domain, to build a sewer plant, sewer treatments plant, and I don't know if the board has any say in whether that would go through or not. So we are headed for some rough times over there on Lower Silver Lake Road, I'll tell you that.
Any further comment? And this is about the, ratifying the written agreements with Mr. Bagley and Mr. Babbitt. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Final item on our report are the three zoning hearing board hearings to be heard by the zoning hearing board on July 6th. They've been outlined in my memorandum to the board. Does the board wish to take a position on any of those items?
Anybody wanna take a position?
Hearing none. That concludes our report. Thank you.
You didn't get to say your crickets tonight.
It's a little late.
Yeah. All right, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. General fund balance this evening is $5,627,945. Plan expiration before the board with no action required. We have Chief Hearn to give his monthly chief's report. Even chief.
Evening, the board members. Major police report documented 1,775 calls to service. We log 21,000-plus miles on our patrol fleet. We had 14 arrests, three burglaries, all commercial-related, one assault, one terror threat, malarmed firearm, one narcotic possession, one fraud, one warrant, and one PFA violation with five DUIs. 14 cases referred to detectives, six crime scenes were processed. We had 56 traffic crashes, 199 traffic citations issued, and 197 warnings issued. There were two truck enforcement details, one in Newtown, one in Ridgtown. 17 truck inspections, six citations, seven warnings. Three vehicles were placed out of service, one driver was placed out of service, and two vehicles were towed. Significant events on 5/31. My longtime executive police chief, executive assistant Jean Tanner retired after 25 years of service. We wish her well on her retirement. Her replacement has been hired, Ms. Valerie Becker. She'll begin her service on July 5th. Three successful public service events in May. Pretzels with the police, the Grains Fair, our car show at Veterans Park on May 21st, and the Police Memorial Mass at St. Andrews on May 22nd. I want to thank everybody that attended, and we have an upcoming event on June 20th at Reedus on 14 Swamp Road from 5:30 to 8:00 PM for kids under 12, free water rice. If you have any answer, any questions you may ask.
Any questions for the chief? I see Mr. Mack.
Yes, do you notice any, well, I was gonna ask you about the, the accident at Tower Boulevard and Newtown Yardley Road. Are you aware of that?
No.
Mentioned here?
No, I heard earlier, three-car accident. Wasn't that significant, otherwise it would've been advised.
Okay. And in terms of DUIs, can you say there's a, is it easing up from when it was last year? I know last year was probably pretty high, maybe, or the year before that?
Year-to-date in 2022, we had 91 total. So far, year-to-date in 2023, we're down, we're at 21. So that's a reduction from DUIs.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I didn't catch that. That's good. That's a good number.
Once again, I'd just like to extend our condolences for the loss in your family.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes. Anyone else? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Mr. Chairman, I have one other item under my report for the board's consideration. It's the consideration to purchase body-worn cameras for the police department from Exxon Enterprises, the amount of $393,112.77. This was outlined under the 2024 capital plan. The total amount is less $250,000, that we were fortunate enough to receive the Justice Assistance, Assistance Grant, and the amount of $250,000 to offset some of that cost, along with a $50,000 capital contribution from the township, which re, which leaves the township with the $23,000 roughly payment over the next four years for these, for this equipment. Also comes with the in-car camera systems. So the appropriate motion would be authorization to purchase the body-worn cameras for the police department from Exxon Enterprises Incorporated, the amount of $393,112.77 through Sourcewell.
Motion, second. Thank you very much. I'm gonna remember we had them this time. I did the math, and I noticed that the $23,000 and change was, there wasn't any interest on that payment plan.
That's correct. It's just a division of the, that's total remaining.
Into four. Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I have a question. Just occurred to me, sorry, I might get into sent you ahead of time. Do you know, what's the upgradeability of these cameras? Like, are we looking at, how many years, so we have to do it all over again, kind of thing, or?
It'll probably be five to 10 years, and you'll have to upgrade it.
Okay.
It'll probably have to do with software and, and storage requirements, along with any other federal requirements that come down.
All right, thank you. I was just curious, and it just occurred to me. Thank you.
Hopefully, we get a couple of years, and we don't have to pay extra. Okay. That takes us to bills, minutes, bills and reports. Oh, we didn't vote. I am really messing up tonight.
Well, it's late, Mr. Chairman.
All, all in favor of the motion to purchase the body cam, body-worn cameras, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have under my report.
Now we go to minutes, bills.
Like to make a motion to approve the minutes of our May 24th, 2023 meeting.
You have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor are accepting the minutes of May 24th, 2023, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Like to make a motion to pay our bills in the amount of $921,996.17.
We have a motion, do we have a second? I'll second it. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, on page two, we're making a payment for MS4 individual permit renewal of $2,500 to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. I'm assuming this has to do with settling once and for all the MS4 permit issue.
It's, it's the annual fee for the MS4 permit, yes.
I mean, didn't we have to renew this per, what's, you know, we were gonna do Meadows and Roberts Ridge Park?
Yes, every, every certain amount of years, you have to renew the permit, correct?
Excuse me?
Every certain five years, you need to renew the permit.
And so this is the four, five-year renewal?
No, that's annual. Each year, that's two.
So there's an annual fee, and then there's a?
I'm just wondering about the Meadow that was proposed?
Yes.
For Roberts Ridge Park?
Yep.
To comply with the requirements for the MS4 permit.
Yes, I understand what you're talking about, and Leanna and our public works director are working together to start that project.
So we're still not ready for the five-year?
No.
Is that, that the case?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions about the bills? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favors of paying our bills, as the bills list of June 14th, 2023, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries four one.
Like to make a motion for our total of inter-fund transfers in the amount of $287,562.11.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving the inter-fund transfers for June 14th, 2023, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Five, motion passes five one, five, five zero. Second round of public comment.
Chad Deap, only ten grand. Richest and the finest. I'd like to thank Mr. Dennis Fisher for being the only Democrat to attend the Memorial Day parade. Don't know about the other three, but, you know, thanks, Dennis. I'll be sure to tell all the other veterans between now and December, November, about, you know, what, how they think about us. It's not something that happens once, once in a blue moon. It's something that happens every year, Memorial Day, and, you know, Merkley Post 440 is one that does this thing, and it's been in Newtown for over 50 years. So, thanks a lot, guys. Thanks a lot, Dennis.
Any other public comment? Okay, it takes us, old business, any old business? I just remind the board that in July, we're planning to meet at 6 o'clock to discuss the AV prioritization, prioritizing the?
Wednesday? Wednesday again, I'm sorry.
Regular meeting in July, July 12th?
July 12th.
At 6 o'clock. And we'll have our, that's a special meeting for the, to discuss the AV equipment upgrades, and then that'll be followed by our regular meeting.
If I, can I just say something about that? If I could just ask if any supervisor has any questions that they could submit to, you know, for answers, so that questions can be answered quickly about the upgrade for the AV, that would be appreciated. I've been told.
I'd be glad to get together with you and go over some questions, because you seem to know a lot more than I do about that.
And then, of course, our professionals will give us some answers as well, so that that'll be good. And then we do have a special hearing after, we have to open a hearing after our regular business. It's part of our regular business that day. Any, any new business? No need for an executive session this evening?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right, without further objection, or further ado, I'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone.